If they're here, we'll promote them first.
Okay.
Evening. It's July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is a meeting of the Village of Atlantic Planning Board. We have quite a number of items on our agenda tonight, so we're just going to get right into it. So first, we have our taking of attendance. So we have all members of the planning board here. We have Seamus Horrock, Cindy Goldstein, Ellen Styler, Richard Littman and myself. We have Teresa Beckner, our land use attorney. We have John Keller, our consulting engineer. We have Alicia Moore and Elaine Do from AKRF, our consulting planners. We have Susan Oakley, our consulting landscape architect. And we have Sean Jimmison, our acting building inspector tonight. And Brittany O'Neil, our land use board secretary. Did I miss anybody? Trying to look at the Brady bunch on the screen here and get everybody. Okay. All right. First up on the agenda, we have the minutes from our last meeting, which was June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Besides the fact that the resolution that got cut and pasted into the body of the minutes is all screwed up. Some sort of format problem. Did anybody have any comments on the actual body of the minutes? No comments? No comments? No comments? No comments? Okay, so we're going to request that the cutting and pasting job of the resolution for four fifteen clap and get fixed before these get finalized. And then do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended or revised or fixed or whatever?
So moved.
Do I need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Seamus?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
May I just ask, you know, I know that in the resolution that was attached to the minutes, item ten was a reference to the tree preservation plan and the survival of the trees. Is that something, Teresa, we can use sort of as boilerplate moving forward and that's always then going to be included in in similar types of applications?
Yes, we can. We can definitely do that. That's and I will, I will attempt to remember to add it. I'm sure you'll remind me if I don't, but we will.
We have a lot of heads here. Somebody will figure it out.
I usually see these things before you all do, so I'll try to remember. Okay, I just want to note for the minutes that Dennis Drogan, who is also acting or assistant building inspector, but acting building inspector also has also with us tonight as well. Just joined us. Okay, we're gonna move, if this is possible. Brittany, are the people here for ten sixty-five seven Oaks Lane?
Ah, yes, Kristen is on.
Okay, let's, let's just do this because this is going to be relatively fast, I think. We have a request before us for an extension for the site plan and the wetlands permit for ten sixty-five seven Oaks Lane. This is becoming a fairly common experience for us, common occurrence because of everything going on with market and I'm guessing financing and the supply chain. People aren't able to get their projects going in a timely fashion as we would hope, as they probably hope more than us. So we have a request to extend the time until a year from the, let's see. It was supposed to expire on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and they are asking for an extension to July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Motel, did I just see? There you are. Do you have anything to add to that?
I do. Good evening, Chairwoman, members of the planning board, Kristen Motel, with Cuddy and Veder for Gary and Lisa Matthews. They are the owners of the property and they were the recipients of wetlands and site plan approvals from the planning board several years ago in twenty twenty. They've been diligently pursuing construction, actually, construction of their home is almost complete. But the site plan and wetlands approvals do have a condition that construction must be completed within two and a half years of issuance of those approvals. They are on the cusp, but to be conservative here, we are asking for an additional year extension. And I believe, Brittany, Lisa Matthews may be on here if the board has any questions on her progress with the home and the improvement.
She is. You want me to promote her?
If there's questions.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody have any questions? I know I don't. It's tough out there. We know that. Nobody? Okay, Teresa, is this just a voice vote to approve the? You're on mute.
All right. If someone would just like to make a motion to to extend the approvals for an additional year until July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three without any other changes to the resolution, subject to all the same conditions.
Okay, would anybody like to make that motion as just stated?
Moved as long as I don't have to remember the whole thing and restate it.
Is, is one year what we would always do? I mean, if it's close, is there any reason to do less just for neighbors getting things done? Or do you think one year is, is that typical?
It's typical to do one year and it's also easier if we keep it the same.
And in that, in that case, I will second it.
Okay, okay. Let's see, let's vote. Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right. Brings us to our first new application for the evening. We have an application at ten thirty-seven Oriental Avenue, a proposal to demolish the home that's on the site now and to construct a new two and a half story single family residence, which is somewhat larger, which of course you would expect in these days. So why don't we promote who's going to speak on behalf of the applicant? And let them present the application to us. And then we have comments from our consulting planner, our consulting engineer, our consulting landscape architect.
Diane, Steve going to speak as well? Marsh?
If there are questions, but I would, I would promote him in case.
Okay.
We're good?
Yep. Girl set.
Okay, super. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Eaton from Kellerian Architects. And I'm here representing Lindsay and Nick Gorovich on their project at ten thirty-seven Oriental Avenue. I have other consultants here, Dan Sherman, landscape architect. I believe it's Michael Stein, although I don't see his, yes, there he is, Michael Stein from Hudson Engineering, civil engineer. I will just kind of walk you through the whole project, including some of their sheets. If it's okay, I'll just share my screen. And if you have any specific questions, you know, Michael and Dan can certainly answer any on those sheets themselves. So I'm just going to share my screen. Okay, so this is the first sheet, our CS one sheet, and I just kind of zoomed in on the site plan and hopefully that's at a good scale that everyone can see. What we have here, this right here is Oriental Avenue. And this dash line here is existing line of house, which is really situated, you know, well into the rear yard. It's not really in a great location at all. So that was like our first point that we knew we would want to have the house closer to the street.
Is even, I don't want to interrupt you, but you're, you're fading in and out. Your microphone gets loud and soft, loud and soft, and I don't know if it's. Is anybody else hearing that?
Yes.
Okay.
Same problem.
Get a little closer to the microphone or something.
Get a little closer to the microphone. I can also switch my microphone if this is not a good microphone.
That right there is very good.
This is good? Okay, super. I'll start over. So on this side is Oriental Avenue. And the dash line is existing footprint of the house that we are taking down. It sits well far into the rear yard. So our goals were to move the house forward, whereas more in keeping, you know, with standard positioning of homes. Some of the other factors that came into play were the fact that we wanted to keep certain of the big trees along the street side, which were rather large. We also wanted to have a driveway with an ability to turn around so we could pull forward onto Oriental, because it's a rather busy road and visibility is a little tough right there at the entryway. We also like the idea of extending a sidewalk to the existing, sorry, a front walk to the sidewalk, so we were more connected to the community. So that kind of just explains a little bit about how we arrived at where our house sits. As one of the consultants pointed out, there is a travel way along the northerly side of the property. We've moved our driveway completely off that travel way. And just to briefly talk about that, because it was brought up in one of the consultant's full memo. This is a travel way that's at six feet on our property and six feet on the adjacent properties, more or less. This was put in place decades ago when Bayhead was not built, so there were some landlocked homes and that was the reason for it. But since Bayhead was created, no property is currently landlocked. And right now, it is, it is not, it is not a public easement or travel way. And my client is in discussions with the neighbors that are impacted just to see exactly, you know, what, what can be done. Our, our goal would be to remove the gravel because it's rather unsightly and it's really what we find obsolete, you know, and in terms of its functionality. But that's to be determined with the adjacent neighbors. The house is fully complying with all zoning regulations. So I think I'll just kind of start going through the rest of the documents. Sorry, I have a little bit of a scratchy throat. We have now the consultant drawings from Michael Stein. So there are a number of trees that we do have to take down, just based on where the house is currently situated. A number of them are, you know, really right on top of this home, so to take it down, we do have to take down some of the trees. We were trying to be very mindful of keeping as many as possible, and this is what we arrived at. Going further along, this is, you know, the beginning of the surface water and mitigation plans. We have silt fencing wrapping around tree protection details. The drywall system that we have is situated in the front yard here, and Michael can speak, you know, in greater length on that. Again, more details in terms of that coltech system and more details. Going on to Dan Sherman's landscape plan, again, pointing out some of the trees that we're saving in filling around the perimeter where we did kind of prune out some, you know, invasive species like burning bushes, trees that are dying. There were a number of trees that are not in great shape. While including, you know, some screening, some boxwood screening around parking areas, you know, found, you know, nice plantings around walks, screening around condenser units, et cetera. Again, Dan will be able to walk, talk you through that with much more grace than I just. These were just additional documentations of things that Dan had provided in case you need to refer to them, plant list, et cetera. Moving on to the floor plans. It's an L-shaped home. The garage situates, you know, forward of the property, there's a drive court here. Then walking in, it's pretty, you know, common layout where foyer, family room, kitchen towards the back of the house, dining room off to the side, mud and service spaces connecting the kitchen to the garage and study and some other private smaller living spaces off to the north side. We have the children bedroom, you know, over to one side, the master suite on the other. This is on the second floor. And over the garage, we have a study in this day of everybody working from home and another guest bedroom for long-term guests. Basement is also fairly typical with recreation room, gym and the guest bedroom. These are the elevations, just to give you a sense of what the house looks like. I'm trying to keep the house in scale and nothing too large in any one direction. And those are photos, so I think you all have seen the property. And I think that pretty much covers it.
Anyone else from your team, one of them, go through any more detail at this point in time, since this is sort of a preliminary overview?
Good evening, Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering. Just very briefly that, you know, we have received the comments from colored sessions office. Relatively minor things, we've already gone through and addressed most of them, so we'll definitely have the submission in for the next meeting.
Okay.
Dan, maybe you'd like to come, I'm sorry. Dan, would you like to comment on yours?
Yeah, yeah. Diane, can you bring my page back up?
Yep.
So we did a planting plan and we're removing a number of trees that, it's probably at the top, it's about a dozen trees. And I've replaced them with new trees of the very same species. So there's white pine and there's sugar maple and cherries that were on the property. And I am also in receipt of the caribella land design review. And it pointed out that we should try for more native species as well. I think that falls mostly in the shrub category, because in our trees, I have sugar maple, river birch, American dogwood, white pine for the trees and a couple cherries. I don't think lilac is native, but the shrubs, I did not draw from a native list and I, I can, I can work on that. I have andromeda because the deer resistant boxwoods lends itself, it's deer resistant, but also works with the style of the house. Nermal Gator, you want them, this is a ground cover that's seasonal and evergreen and attractive, but these are not native things. So that's my next step to review it and as best I can get things that still serve the purpose of making attractive home for the, for the homeowners but, and are deer resistant and serve the purpose, but are native. I'm aware of what kinds of things would do that. But we just got this memo, so I haven't done it, but I will. I don't think I had a hundred percent, but I bet I can get up to eighty percent native, I think.
Okay. Okay. All right, I think that gives us an overview of the, of the project. And as you've mentioned, as the consultants of the planning board, we do get a jump on, on things. We kind of fast track. We start the review before the meeting. So we do have some comments already to give you. And from AKRF to go over that out to us. I think Alicia, are you going to do that to me?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
So our concerns were really, the main one was about the easement, just clarifying those, those issues about what's going to happen to the, that gravel driveway. Another issue was just about the calculations of the impervious surface area. And it's not really our, I don't want to get too far into the technicality there, but I just wanted to bring up that the gravel driveway was counted towards the existing impervious surface area. And that the, the site plan, if that, if that could just include the floodplain and the hazard areas also sign the EAF. And those were our main concerns. And of course, recommending that this is a type two action.
I, I tend to go, and I think it was from one of my last hearings, I went to the DEC to, and that like automatically filled in that, as you pointed out. So I did go on to FEMA and print it out a format and we are not in any flood zone, so I'll provide a presentation in our supplemental. And yes, I will, I will sign this.
We're losing you, we're losing you again.
Michael, could you comment on the gravel potentially? Her, her question about the gravel being part of impervious?
As far as our calculations go, we're treating that as, as impervious. Just because that's, it's just basically our standard practice and, and I know working with college sessions, that's typically what they're looking for. More than that, I mean, as far as lack coverage, typically we wouldn't count that as, as impervious.
Okay.
So we just have to make sure, if that's not impervious, then it's not calculated in the current inventory of impervious. And then, you know, versus as proposed, because we know there's an increase, significant increase in impervious surface with the size.
We'll, we'll take a look and we'll, we'll review and just make sure it gets clarified.
Make sure it's fixed, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Alicia. John, you tell it sessions, you want to go over what your initial comments were?
Good evening. Review of the site plan. The applicants proposing to mitigate the stormwater through infiltration devices in the front yard. The important part of their design is that all discharge from impervious surfaces will be detained on, within those units and it will all be infiltrated into the ground up to the twenty-five year storm. Why that's important is there's no drainage on Oriental Avenue. So we won't have any discharge to the twenty-five year storm. I noticed that the, the house will have a full basement and I assume with some pump footing drains, which have to discharge somewhere. We asked that you show that discharge location and if we can mitigate that flow, so we don't, also don't have discharge directly to the road or neighbors' properties from the sump pump. I think we've, we've handled other projects in the village with Mike Stein's office where they've discharged the sump pump to an infiltration unit in the yard and so that we don't have a point discharge. We also ask if there's a stormwater management system detail on the detail sheet. It would be helpful if you could add more detail to that detail, such as inverts bottom and top of unit twenty-five year high water elevation. It would just make it easier for us to, in reviewing the calculations, to confirm that the inverts and the high water elevations are all working properly. I, there was some grading shown on the plan, but there, there appeared to be some grading that may be missing, because I believe the, the grade in the back right-hand side of the property is slightly higher than the first floor, so I assume there's going to be some grading. Probably because of the site is so flat. You just couldn't pick it up with the contours, so maybe some spot elevations. And a cut fill analysis, so we know exactly how much, how many yards of material will be coming in or offsite. I assume it'll be going offsite and I assume it won't be that much volume, because this doesn't appear to be significant cuts and fills in the property. We requested that the applicants show the existing utility locations and the, and whether we're going to be installing new utilities to the village infrastructure in the street, or whether we're going to use the existing service lines. It would be helpful if we had dimensions on the driveway to motor court and the parking spaces on the erosion sediment control plan, if the temporary stockpiles, if we can quantify the, the amount of volume, we really need this store on the site confirm that we have the, the stockpile shown or of adequate size. We could also show the equipment staging area on the erosion sediment control plan. If the construction details can be expanded to include all improvements, curbing, pavements, walkways. Obviously, a curb cut will be required with the village. We, we requested that the details, the village details off the village site be included on the plan for the contractor to fully understand for restoration of pavement, if, if we're in the road with new utility services. We have to replace the granite curb or connect with the saddle to the existing sewer system. Also, the, the plan showed a decorative treatment of, for the driveway, which was in the right of way itself. You may want to check with the highway superintendent whether they would prefer that decorative treatment to be on the private property rather than the village right of way. It's definitely their call, but it's, it's an issue you may want to check with them early on. The trench drain detail should be shown. I believe you have a trench drain in the driveway and it should have a sump. Tree protection detail should be included on the plan and the delineation on the, on the layout plan or, or the erosion sediment control plan, that's where it is, should be extended out to the drip line of the trees. And my only other question was on the, on the travel way also. Mrs. Eaton had addressed that already.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. We're here from our, we're here from our landscape architect consultant Susan Oakley. We do have, we'll catch up to this soon, okay? The new tree law, which is now encoded after three eighteen of Village Code, which is available online, requires the applicants to submit a tree preservation plan, which has to be included in the determination letter, because they're sent out from the building inspector. So hopefully we'll get that together and get that out, but you know, that's one piece of documentation that's missing that you're going to have to fill in. And it's fairly self-explanatory, if you go to the code, under the section of site plan and planning board, as opposed to building inspector and building inspector, building department and no site plan, you know, the site plan, planning board section, and it's fairly clear what's needed. That said, where's Susan? Do you want to walk us through your, your concerns with regards to the trees? And the other landscape line features?
Sure. You, you brought up the most important point, I think, and that's the tree preservation plan. And I gave the general definition in my memo, but as you mentioned, there is more detailed information online. So that includes most of the information needed. It should also include the village's tree protection standard, which I also included with the memo. And Mr. Sherman touched upon adding as many native species or changing the species to as many native plants as possible, and that would be appreciated. Also, you, he also gave a, an assessment of the existing trees on the property, which is very helpful. It's too bad that's not part of the tree plan, but the fact that you included it helped, was very helpful in determining how you decided what was okay to remove. And that's about it, that, that the, you know, it's still in the preliminary stages. So once we see the tree preservation plan, we'll have a lot more information.
And, and just to give you a heads up, Mr. Sherman, trees over a certain size, if they're removed, need to be replaced. And if they're larger, they need to be replaced by more than one tree and so on and so forth. And that's all spelled out in the law.
Right. And one other point, when I made a site visit, this is like many of the surrounding properties, it's pretty wooded. And so a lot of the trees are directly on the perimeter of the property, but not on the property. So I mentioned in the memo about protecting the tree roots of neighboring properties also. So I think in the, because of the close proximity of these neighboring trees to the property line, they should also be included on the tree preservation plan, so we know exactly where. they should also be included on the tree preservation plan, so we know exactly where the tree roots are that need to be protected. Yeah, protected. So we should save what we have, unlike what happened at 1010.
Okay, thank you. We can remove the drawings from the screen now, and I'm going to turn to the planning board members for any comments, questions in addition to those that are esteemed consultants. So.
Kathy, before we leave John and Susan's comments, I just wanted to make an observation. A lot of times, the landscape architect will make a change to satisfy a comment by Susan, and it will require more comments from John in the stormwater category. And I just want to say, anything you can do to coordinate that amongst yourselves will just make everything easier for everybody and sort of, and multiple comment letters. So that's just a suggestion on my part.
Not, not only the details on the plan, but if you are required to plant more trees to replace the ones you're taking down than you have in the plan right now, it's going to impact your stormwater management plans. So just so, just so you're aware of that. All right, can we get to a view where we see the gallery instead of the screen, please? And. If we will, this is a, there, thank you very much. This is a single-family home. We'll type it for secret. But before we do that, does any member of the planning board, any other comments, questions, anything for the applicant? So that they have an, you know, a full idea of where we stand right now, anything they have to respond to, or, you know, any questions that we have.
Well, I have a question on the planning board application on the third page. Section two coastal assessment form. Items five and six were checked yes, and I don't know why. Because I'm not sure that this site is adjacent, located in or contiguous to, or have a significant effect on any critical environmental areas, nor do I think it's anywhere near sites of historic archaeological or cultural significance. But I, I think Ms. Eaton, I don't.
Also filled in automatically by this DEC mapper. You're talking about the EAF form?
Yeah, items five and six under section two coastal assessment form. I, I don't know. Yeah, Seamus, you, you were on HCZM more recently.
You, you asked the exact same question I was going to. If you look at that detailed mapper, Long Island Sound is the, which is a critical, yeah, that's what's popping up. And I think we all can assess the proximity of this lot to Long Island Sound, I think. But I don't know why the archaeological sites came up, yes, but that also is, is in the EAF mapper. That's the last page of the, of the EAF. So it would be nice to understand why that's being flagged, especially if there's a demolition here, which I doubt is relevant, but I wonder why it's yes.
Computers sometimes, you know, is it the old saying, garbage and garbage out? And somebody programmed for something.
And then, you know, the only other thing I have is, is trees, trees, trees. You know, I, I, I think the planning board echoes Ms. Oakley's commentary that, you know, it'd be important to protect the tree roots on trees that are on the property lines, or even a little bit in on the neighbors' properties, you know, we can't go, as was pointed out, we can't have another situation like across the street. And, you know, if any effort can be made to keep even a few of the trees that are looking, you know, like they're going to be removed on this, because frankly, losing a large sugar maple or something else, so you put in two smaller ones, you've really lost the canopy for the next 15, 20 years. So we would just, I, I think, urge you to preserve the mature trees, not, not the shrubs. I don't think we're so interested in the, you know, the, the eunomus and the ilex and the, you know, that. We're, we're looking for habitat, we're looking for cultivars, we're looking for maintaining that very woodsy feel, field in a, in a village that, you know, is losing trees all the time.
We, we're trying to improve in the county, in the village of Marinac, as are many of the, many of the villages around here. We, we're reviewing a comprehensive plan at this point in time, and I saw some data, our review recently, we're talking about it later tonight, that we had a 46% canopy, which no longer exists. That's an old number. And our goal was to get to 50. We unfortunately have lost many mature trees in the neighborhood that we're talking about right now. As Cindy mentioned, just across the street, they took down 60-something, I don't remember the number. So we're trying to increase the canopy and any large tree that can be saved, even if it means making something else smaller. You know, carport, open the lawn, which has no ecological value whatsoever. Something we urge you to look at, and that's something that we're going to look at too. If you've got to plant more trees to replace the ones you're taking down, we'll be looking for where they are. Where are you putting them and how you put them and making sure they survive. I think that's something to pay a lot of attention to. Anybody have anything else they want to add to this before we type for secret? I think you guys have to go to HCZM. No, you don't. Just VAR, so it's just us, okay? So you don't have anywhere else to go. You just go off and do the work. Anybody have any other issues they want to raise before we take care of secret and, and send the team on their way? Yes, no? No? It doesn't, I don't see anybody. Okay. Teresa or Alicia, do you want to say anything about secret? This is a single-family home. It's pretty, Alicia.
Sorry. I know, just that we're recommending that's type two.
Yeah. Okay, so I need a motion then to type this application for secret as a type two.
So moved.
Need a second?
Okay.
Two seconds. Okay. Ellen? Ellen? She looks frozen. Okay, let's skip her for a minute. Ellen, are you there? No.
Yes, I'm here now, so I, I.
You froze for a minute.
I was frozen.
Yes. All right. Your vote on the, on the motion to type, or that's type two for secret?
Yes.
Seamus?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. We're done. I, I think it's pretty comprehensive. I hope no new issue shows up. But it depends on, obviously, on the next submission that we see for our review of you guys. Okay. All right, great. All right, you have any questions for us? Everybody clear?
I know sometimes you tell us which, which next hearing we could go to, but I, I think you'll be able to pull this all together by the next hearing.
Depends on when you, we have no meetings in August.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so you'd, you'd have to get your material in for the, the last meeting, which is the 27th of July pretty quickly, or you're the second week of September.
Technically, the cutoff is today for that, unless you were willing to extend it, Kathy, for the 27th.
Well, I think they have, they have a lot of work to do, so I'm sure. Even if we extend it, we only extend it till Friday, so.
Yeah.
Lose you an extra two days. And we need time for everyone to review everything before the meeting.
Right. I guess, so the, the extension would only be to Friday, as you said.
It would only be till Friday, yeah.
That doesn't.
Only to do that if you think you can, today's Wednesday night, so you have Thursday and Friday, right? Not, then you have.
If that's okay, can I consult with my other people here? I mean, it seems a little tight to me.
You can do it off-camera, because.
That's two weeks away.
Come up with, if it doesn't come in, if it comes in, great, if it doesn't come in, great, but we'll know on Friday. You can take that in line.
Fair enough.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay. This brings us to the second, new application for preliminary site plan review at 900 Rushmore Avenue, which is the Beach Point Country Club. Before we get into this, I believe Cindy has something she needs to say. We'll let her say it.
Yes, yes, I, I submitted a memo to the planning board and also to the board of trustees. I'm certainly going to recuse from this application, since my husband and I are members of Beach Point Club. Brittany, if you need copies of those two memos, one was requesting an advisory opinion from the Board of Ethics, exactly how they wanted the recusal form to happen, but that was two months ago and I heard nothing. So I'm going to recuse as publicly as I can, so I will turn off my camera. I, I won't leave the meeting, Teresa, unless you tell me I have to, but I will be muted and not, not participating. Is that okay? Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah. Sorry. We took the opportunity to get some cold drinks. Okay, okay. So we, we need to, we need to promote the, the team from Beach Point. I see Michael's still with us. You all involved with Beach Point also. Okay, we have an application before us to demolish the existing tennis pro shop and parking lot that's near the tennis courts, I guess, in the tennis pro shop, and construct a new pro shop, a viewing pavilion and a new parking lot. I think that sums it up. Am I missing anything? Okay, I'm sorry, my husband just poured some more water. So we're going to go through the same process we just went through with the last application. We're going to start with the applicant and have them present the project to us. And then our consultants will chime in on any comments they have had so far. And then the planning board will get to, get to speak. Okay. Who is here?
Excellent. My name is Kathleen Gallagher. I am with Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. I am also joined tonight by the applicant Randy Ruder of Beach Point Club. I will share my screen.
Does Randy need to be promoted?
I just did.
Okay. Hi, Randy.
The proposed project at Beach Point Club consists of the demolition of an existing tennis pro shop building, the construction of a new tennis pro building and a viewing pavilion that are within the same general area as the previous, the reconfiguration of the existing parking lot and associated utilities, including upgrading stormwater management practices. To orient ourselves to the drawings, north is on the bottom left-hand corner of the screen. Beach Point Club is located at 900 Rushmore Avenue in the Marine Recreation Zone. The club owns two parcels. One of the parcels is located to the east across from Rushmore Avenue, which is where the main clubhouse is located. And the second parcel is located to the west, which is the parcel shown on the plans. This 5.4-acre parcel is flanked on four sides by streets, including Rushmore Avenue, Bloomsdale Avenue, Walton Avenue, and Bleecker Avenue. The lot consists of several recreation courts. You can see the tennis courts that are located on the bottom of the screen, as well as supporting buildings, including the tennis pro shop, which is the subject of the application, and that is located in this area. And then the existing parking lot to be removed is this large hatched area in the middle of the screen. It should be noted that the eastern portion of the lot is in the AE12 floodplain, and you can see that dividing line right here. So we are in a floodplain on this portion of the site, and then it transitions into a hatch zone X and the unhatched zone X. As previously mentioned, the project includes the demolition of the existing pro shop. And if we move on to the layout and landscaping plan, the construction of a new one-story tennis pro shop and a viewing pavilion that are in generally the same area as the previous building. The project includes updating the hardscape that is located around the proposed building, as well as the landscaping in the same general area, and the addition of several light poles along the edge of the parking lot. The landscaping for the project does include the reuse of hydrangeas that are on site that are in pretty good condition. And so we are proposing to reuse 12 of, 25 of those hydrangeas on site. The existing parking lot that is proposed to be removed is currently around 27 spaces. And the increase, we're able to increase the total parking lot to 49 spaces. We were able to do this with only a slight increase to the overall footprint of the site, and just making the layout a little more efficient, we were able to substantially include, increase the total parking on site. The existing parking lot, I'm going to jump back to the existing conditions very quickly, consists of parking that is located along the edge of the lot, and then a bay of angled parking spaces located in the center. You can see that the parking lot is a little oddly configured. It's not very efficient. And so that was one of the main goals of the reconfiguration of the lot. The existing traffic pattern includes a one-way entrance from Rushmore Avenue, and then includes a one-way exit onto Bloomsdale Avenue. The intent of the proposed parking lot is to keep the existing traffic pattern as it already is, because it is accepted and is a routine by the existing club members, and it works most efficiently during their high-traffic times. The parking lot serves as the location for recreation on site. That doesn't put a huge demand, though, on the existing parking lot. But the lot also supports the day camp that occurs within some of the other buildings on site, and that activity has an increase of traffic during drop-off and pickup throughout the day. So one of the reasons that we have kept the traffic pattern as both one-way in, one-way on the drive aisles, and a one-way exit is to make that pickup and drop-off more efficient for the club members. One, because it's the way that they already use the lot. And two, we think it continues to be efficient as compared to allowing one availability for them to move around and, and kind of get stuck in that traffic pattern as they're dropping off and picking up their children. We also believe that it just keeps those peak times a little more safe. Jumping to our utilities plans, the proposed disturbance on site is 0.9 acres, so we are under one acre of disturbance. That means the stormwater management practices were designed in accordance with the town code, which mimics the state code, so the project is a redevelopment with an increase in impervious surface. Treatment includes two pervious asphalt pavement sections within the parking lot, and then a third location of an underground infiltration system. Water and sewer service is going to connect in, it's going to be rerouted, but connect into existing conditions that we already have and existing connections that we already have on site. And that concludes the main technical portion of our presentation. I'm happy to take any questions from the board or the consultants, as well as hear the consultants' comments.
Do you have any other presentations to do for tonight, or this was everything that? Everything?
We do not have the architect with us tonight, but I do have their floor plans and elevations. I guess the most illustrative is, is this elevation, which shows the proposed tennis pro building, and then propose the, the pavilion. So the pavilion is open air on the sides, but it is covered with a roof. Obviously, if we're watching tennis in the sun, we want to provide shaded, shaded areas for them in this space.
Okay. Okay. So we can then pivot to Alicia from AKRF.
All right, so for this one, as a fundamental thing on the site plan, it would be helpful to add a zoning analysis table that just compares the proposed dimensions and other technical specs to the requirements that's already in the zoning code.
I do have one, one question. You could just talk, you know, a little more about what paths the requirements we already have on the table. It doesn't have to be tonight. We can talk off. It doesn't have to be tonight. We can talk offline, but I just do need a little more clarification on the additional categories that you want to see on that table.
Okay, sure. I will, I will take a look at that and send over, send over any comments, which is the solid, I'm sorry. Alright, thank you. That, that may be sufficient. I just wanna take a, take a second look.
Perfect.
So as we see, they also noted that there would be, there's another application coming before the board for the marina. And just given that that's sufficiently distinct, the applications don't need to be combined. And the parking lot, which is great, it would increase efficiency and safety. And it's nearly doubled the number of parking spaces. And given the location of the site, the application will need to be referred to the HCZMC. It also requires approval by the Board of Architectural Review. And as you mentioned, it's in the AE floodzone. And so it will have to comply with the additional requirements of chapter one eighty-six of the code. And then finally, this also, we're recommending that it's a type-two action under CER.
And that's because of the size, correct?
Right, right. It's a number nine. Yeah, but the exact threshold is, I'm not gonna guess, but yes, it's because of the size.
Because it's small.
Four thousand square feet, I believe, is the. Yeah, I believe so. I noticed on the list of approvals needed, it didn't say a floodzone permit. That was the six, seven, twenty-two determination. Alicia, should that, should that be added?
I think that's done by the flood, the building department, right?
Oh, yeah, they do that internally. We haven't added them, but we can start to if we want to.
Right, that's done by the building department.
Okay, no problem. I just wanna make sure.
There's a flood source.
We also filled out a preliminary floodplain permit application when we went to the building department for their original determination.
That might help us see that. So Brittany can get ahold of that off of the notice and disseminate it to the planning board members and.
Yeah, I can get a copy.
Thanks, 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 thanks. Okay. Okay, we don't have comments from any other consultants. I don't know, John, if you have, is there no review from the consulting engineer because of the size of the project?
No, I submitted a review.
I'm sorry. Why don't you walk us through it then?
Sure.
Enlighten me. I'm not home, so I'm like, I kind of like in a mess here.
As Mrs. Gallagher had mentioned, that they're mitigating the stormwater through the infiltrators proposed on the, I guess it's the northeast side of the property and using porous pavement. We're reviewing the calculations. I had some initial comments, which I've provided. Many of my comments are just typical housekeeping in the village notes and, you know, documenting certain issues with the erosion sediment control plans, such as the concrete washout areas and the required items that need to be submitted. The more important items, the first one is the floodplain. It appears that there is fill being placed within the floodplain. And the applicant will need to demonstrate that compensatory storage is being provided to compensate for that fill. So that it ends up as a zero net increase in fill on the property. So we maintain the present volume at a minimum. The other item that concerned me, there was a discharge proposed from the stormwater system. That's a point discharge into the lawn area adjacent to Rushmore Avenue. You know, you're adding discharge directly to that area. I know there is a drainage system on the northern end of the property. I know it's a bit of a distance. It would be nice to extend that drain directly into the drainage system on the north so that we don't have accumulation of water in that area.
It's something we can look at. I do have, there are a lot of trees in this area.
Yeah, I see that. Could we, or possibly take a look at what it might take just to detain the complete or infiltrate the complete runoff? Possibly a few more infiltrators will eliminate any discharge at all.
That's something we can look at.
Take a look at that and if you'd like to call me, we can talk about it.
Great.
That'd be great. On the plan I received, I noticed on the plan you're presenting tonight, you have dimensions on the parking lot. I believe the plans we were submitted to us did not have the dimensions. So I didn't know how wide the spaces were of the drive aisles. It appears this plan does have it. And obviously, I had, I had, obviously, I had a concern with the, with the two one-way flows. But now that you explained the daycare and the drop-off of the children, I can understand why you're, you're looking to maintain that same flow in one direction. Obviously, we'll need to, you'll need to show the, any signage in the parking lot. I wasn't sure if the existing parking lot was being maintained, you know, it was gonna, you were just adding to it and topping it, or you were gonna remove it and repave it. I, I just wasn't clear on the plan. Doesn't matter to me one way or the other. It's just, if you could just clarify that on the plan. Any stockpile locations, concrete washout, as I mentioned before, some standard notes. And obviously, you would need a street opening permit from the Village DPW for the connection to the, I guess, on the south side, you're connecting to the existing drainage system. Other than that, it's a, it's a clear plan, easy to understand. I'm sure it'll work if we can address these few issues.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to landscape architect. Susan, I don't know if there was a memo. I obviously missed something in my transition year.
There, there was a memo. Again, a tree preservation plan is, is needed. That includes the tree protection standard that I included in the memo. As many people have mentioned, the sites due to the sites proximity to Long Island Sound and the location in a floodplain, I'm requesting that all proposed plant material be native and flood tolerant. And they're only proposing the removal of three evergreen trees and a deciduous tree and an arborvitae shrub as of now. So once the tree preservation plan is put together and we know that the required replacements for the size of these trees has been addressed, which can also be found in the new tree law. There's a chart that indicates the replacement based on the trees that are being removed. Then, then it can be assessed as a whole.
And arborvitae's are not trees.
Yeah, I, I am hesitant to call them a tree, but some are so big, they.
You know, they don't need the definition of a tree, which is trunk, branches.
But they've marked that.
We looked this up. Another project.
Just one quick question. I haven't had a chance to really detail go through that. If our landscape architect has any questions just on the nuances, is it okay if they reach out to you directly just to ask some minor questions?
Absolutely. And if you want to run the plan by me before submitting it, that always can save some steps.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We really appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, let's go then to the gallery. We can stop the screen sharing so that we can see the members of the planning board. And as noted, we have four of us working on this project. So we have to make sure we don't have time. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns to bring up to the applicant now? They will go to HCZM next and work on some of our issues. But they probably won't be back to us until they're finished with HCZM. That's usually the way it works, because the project may change a little bit based on their review. So anybody have any additional?
Yeah, I have a kind of a line of thinking just to ask a little bit about. So I think that the AKRF memo notes, and you know, correct me on this language, that because the other work that this club might do is on a different tax lot, that it can be treated separately, but it wasn't clear to me whether it had to be or even should be. And so I, maybe I would start with a question to John Kellard, which is, this is very close to the one-acre threshold. And, you know, I, I think that paramount to the Village of Amerenik, particularly in a location like this floodplain, right on critical environmental area, Long Island Sound, and, you know, an important location, that if, you know, a club is in control and doing a bunch of work and goes over an acre at one time, perhaps they should be taking that next step for either water quality or quantity. So maybe my question would be, how different would the threshold be if the applicant was to design as if it was a one-acre disturbance?
The key difference is that they would have to design for a hundred-year storm instead of a twenty-five-year storm. For the quantity, the water quality would be the same. It's really the quantity volume. Triggered to a hundred-year. They would also have to file an NOI with New York State DEC. It's not a significant process. We would approve it. It's basically a filing with DEC. I think the major issue is changing the design from a twenty-five-year to a hundred-year.
Yeah, I mean, from where I'm sitting, I'm sure there's an expense that goes with that. I don't know if it's reasonable or not. I mean, it'd be great to see this site designed for a hundred-year storm. But that's.
The site is obviously, I mean, we're in a small area. And obviously, you're all very aware that we're constrained by water tables and things of that nature. So to be able to treat the increase of volume is definitely an ask from the applicant. I am not, Insight is not the designers of the adjacent project, typically Dan Aches and Associates, their offices. But my understanding from that project is that there's very, very minor work in the land and that that disturbance is very minimal. So it's not like we're at that point nine-nine acre line. I do believe that their land disturbance is, is pretty minimal for the additional projects.
Okay, I, I think, I think my comment would be, and you know, the, the, various things will guide this through to wherever it ends up, but my comment would be, I think that we are increasing impervious on this site. You know, it's a floodplain. As of right now, I think there's net fill. We'll see if we end up with that. So, you know, those are things that at least I consider, whether the, you know, whether the twenty-five-year storm versus hundred-year storm type retention is appropriate. But, you know, ultimately, I think hopefully it's gonna be clear what's required. But, you know, being very close to the acre, which is just an arbitrary line and in an important part of the village like this, I think it'd be great to see the applicant do as much as they could, you know, on that, on that front.
I was gonna say.
Just to clarify, you know, because we're talking about the, the other project that we were made aware of. It's not coming to the planning board. It's a project to make the marina entrance ADA compliant. It requires a marine permit, I believe, from HCZM. So just for the people who are watching this and the people, you know, interested in, just to clarify what that is. And Theresa, did you want to make a comment on, on the fact that it was determined by the staff that there would be two separate applications?
Yeah, I think, I think it would go a ways to answer Seamus's question, though. If Ms. Gallagher could provide the toll area of disturbance for the other project. And then if it's, if it's still under an acre, by all means, you know, you, you can certainly provide more stormwater, but at least it would be nice to have that fact in the record.
We understand it's not your firm, but obviously the manager of.
Speaking Courtney.
Knows, knows the details, so you'd be able to get it. Okay, anybody, anybody else on the planning board and have any comments, questions?
Kathy, can I ask one more question?
You can ask.
You, on, Mrs. Gallagher, you, you mentioned additional light. How does it show how high they are and what intensity they are?
I realize I am not showing my screen at the moment, but can do so again if we feel like that is appropriate. We are proposing to have light poles that total height is going to be, I will give you the actual light height instead of, that's our detail where we go through the post heights. The mounting height is gonna be fourteen-six, so it's not intended to be your stereotypical eighteen-foot light poles. They are pole-mounted lights as compared to like the shoebox-style lights that you would consider to have in a parking lot. We did want to take some additional aesthetics into consideration just because of the nature of the club, something that's a little more higher end, but keep it as low as physically possible while still providing safety to anybody that happens to be there at the end of the night in the summer or happens to be there in the winter for any reason, just to make sure that we're providing some, some sort of safety on those perimeter areas.
So it's perimeter lighting, are the tennis courts gonna be lit?
No.
Okay, so. One night tennis.
And these are downward-facing lights. So although you can see it's kind of this lantern style, it's really sitting housed up above in the, in the cap so that it's, it's downward-facing and, and, and not providing any sort of light spillage or pollution onto adjacent neighbor properties.
Great, good catch, Teresa. Who else? If not, that'll wrap this up tonight. I need to see you. Correct? I think so. Okay. Thank you.
You would like to type it and send it on to HCZM?
That's right. Okay, thank you very much. To type it before you go to HCZM.
I do actually have one procedural question. As we talk about going to HCZM, you guys have mentioned that you don't have an August meeting, which means the next submission, both HCZM and the planning board don't have an August meeting. So that means the HCZM submission is August thirty-first, I believe. And the planning board would be the twenty-fourth. Kathy, Chairman, you had said that you wanted us to completely finish HCZM before we came back to the planning board. I think that is, is there any way that we can allow processes? Because it does seem like we have some comments about stormwater and things like that that we need to look out.
We, we've found over, over time, when I say time, years. We, we've found over, over time, and when I say time, years, that often HCZM works with the applicant and the project might shift or change slightly. And so for us to be reviewing a plan that's about to change or may change, we usually don't, unless, until consistency, the LWRP and, and everything's wrapped up with HCZM, the applicants don't come back to the planning board.
So then I guess our, our only other request asked would be, we do believe that there's still some outstanding SWIP comments from the engineer. If there's any way we could get those in the meantime, so that we have the availability.
Oh, I think so. I mean, John, you also consult with HCZM, right?
Yes, I'll be reviewing it when.
You'll be with you the whole time.
Are we anticipating having any of the outstanding comments prior to when we'll submit to them that we can incorporate?
You should have the ones now. Do you not have the ones now?
We have the ones now, but it's mentioned in the memo that the SWIP is still currently under review. So I didn't know if that meant that there were some outstanding comments of which we can be expecting to receive.
None necessarily.
Okay.
I just wanted somebody to, it's really more geared towards the porous pavement. I want other, you know, people in my office to take a, a careful look at the, the calculations. I don't, I don't see any issue there.
Great. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, I'll make sure that that gets done in the next week. So you, you have those comments.
Perfect.
Prior to submitting to, to HCZ. And when you submit to their agency, I'll, I'll, I'll have a review of the documents at that time. So we can address, you, we can respond to any changes you make at that point.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. So I want to type this. It's a type two action because of the size. So I need a motion to type this project, this application project for secret as a type two action.
Go.
Need a second.
A second.
I'm not sure, but I think both of you spoke at the same time. So whoever's doing the minutes will pick one. Okay, let's vote. Richard, let's do a vote. Will it on type two?
Yes.
Okay, Seamus?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Can I vote? Yes. Okay. All right, we'll see you, we'll see you in September, I'm sure. Hopefully have things wrapped up. We have two meetings in September, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, this brings to third application of the evening is a continuing site plan review for seven, I mean, 572 Van Rand's Place. The applicant proposes to construct a five story building with 10 residential apartment units and some parking. As I think everyone knows, this project was in the flood zone and was flooded multiple times, most recently in September when Ida hit us. I think we have everything we've asked for so far. We have a summary memo from AKRF. And tonight, unless the applicant wants to address us with anything to bring us up to date, discussion is really about secret. When, when Ms. Mottel, you're going to be the spokesperson, go for it.
Thank you. For the record, Kristen Motel, I'm a partner at the law firm Cuddy and Veder for the applicants, 572 Van Rand's LLC. And just to make all the planning board members aware, our full team is here again tonight. So Jerry Ryan and Brendan Ahern, the applicants and owners are here, as well as Dan Connors from Aris Energy Solutions, Greg Dallop Sullivan Architects, Michael Stein Hudson Engineering, and Brian Dempsey from Dignity Providence, who's the traffic engineer. I know everyone is intimately familiar with this project and we are here in further in secret review and a secret determination. The materials we provided you with were a result of comments that we received when we were appearing before you in May. Most of them related to the fuel cell system, specifically fire safety. There were comments on noise and local emissions, which were all great questions. So we did provide responses and some of that information, I think you've all had a chance to review. But if you'd like to ask questions in more detail, as I mentioned, Dan is here. Emissions are minimal because there is no onsite combustion process involved in the unit. Noise is also minimal. Fire suppression, there's a full suppression system proposed with heat and smoke detectors, firewalls, everything's going to be a local and state code requirements. Per Kellard Sessions' request, we also provided a volumetric storage analysis for flood volume storage, which demonstrated a increase in total flood volume storage on the site over existing conditions. And that was approximately, I think, 810 cubic feet of storage on site. Michael Stein is here. He can answer any questions that, that have to do with that and the stormwater design. And there were additional landscape modifications made as a result of Terabella's comments. We did include additional flood tolerant shrubs to maximize water uptake, provided some further clarification on the planters and also an updated school age impact evaluation. So aside from everything else that's been submitted here tonight, we are more than happy to take questions and engage in discussion with, with the board members. We would submit that the pretty substantial record in this case supports a determination that there will be no significant adverse environmental impacts here and that the project is truly a model for flood zone development and they're a, a great leader in, in what's to come.
We're fortunate tonight, the building department is going through a transition as Mr. Tavolachi eases into retirement at some point in time. But we have with us tonight Sean Jimson. Now Sean is our acting building inspector, sharing that job with Dennis Jogan, who's also here. But Sean is also our fire, what's your other title, Sean?
Fire inspector.
He's our fire inspector. And he's also, I guess, a firefighter in his spare time. Sean, you obviously haven't seen any of the paperwork for this. This is your first time joining us. Would you like the consultant to, who is designing, who's designing this? So you and I actually spoke about this. I'm sorry.
We spoke about this briefly when they did the garden dedication at the.
Yeah, when I met you at the. Would you like to see the presentation, short presentation on this to see, to just bring you up to speed? We could just run it through just to.
I, I'd love for them to send me whatever they have. I'd love to look at it.
I mean, we could do a little bit, he could do a little bit of presentation now if you'd like. You know, the, the, we haven't seen some of the question, you know, the question. We had a lot of question about fire suppression, as I, I mentioned to you when, when I met you that day. And they've answered those questions, but we haven't had them walk us through it or anything. I don't know. Does anybody mind? Cindy's back. Thank you. Does anybody mind just having a very brief overview for, for Sean's benefit? Since we have him here tonight, and we might want to ask him some questions about how he feels about some of this stuff, because we certainly aren't experts in this.
Yeah, we would be happy to, Brittany, if you want to promote Dan Connors from Aris, he can speak to this. And also Greg Dallop from Sullivan Architecture. I know Sullivan Architecture was working with the fire department. The fire department received copies of our materials and John had discussions with them. So they are also involved in the design for emergency evacuation.
Great, great.
Okay, Greg and Dan are both promoted.
Can see Greg, Dan?
I don't see Dan.
I don't see Dan. Here he is. Okay. All right. If you two gentlemen would, whoever wants to start a brief, a brief overview of, of the system, your interaction with the fire department, which I think is a good thing. And as you mentioned, as you probably heard, we have the fire inspector from the building department with us tonight. And this way we can bring him up to date and he can act as planning board if we need it, hopefully. Okay.
Yeah, why don't you get started?
Okay, thank you and good evening, everybody. I, I just lost a little bit in the transition over from attendee to analyst, but I, I, I think we want to review some of the materials we submitted earlier. Kristen, is there any way to put that on the screen or should I screen share? I have it on the screen now.
You could probably screen share, Brittany will.
Brittany has to just allow you to do that. Yeah.
Okay, that's great. So let me try.
Yep, you have access to it.
Super. Let me try to queue that up and see if it shows what I want to show. So can everybody see my screen that says Aris Energy Solutions on the top?
Yes.
Okay, great. So in late June, we prepared the submittal and the first item of which was fire safety. So focusing on that, I think for tonight's discussion, the bullets basically tell the story, the bullet items tell the story. But it's the fuel cell system, first of all, it has no fuel storage. So it's actually, in that respect, safer than many other boilers or propane tanks. And when the gas is shut off outside the residence, the, the fuel cell simply shuts down. It, it has no means of continuing in its production. So in some respects, the fire protection is similar to a gas boiler or a gas furnace. There will be a fire suppression system to meet code for the entire building, including the mechanicals and the electrical cabinets associated with both the solar PV and the fuel cells. We have some details to share, but you know, much of this detailed design has to be done with further design work on the building by the architect and the engineer. But certainly they're going to comply with the standards for smoke detectors, heat detectors, fire rated walls, et cetera, et cetera. Sprinklers are an item that will bring up, often they're not desirable in rooms with electrical panels and we'll simply follow code to take care of that. And, and again, you know, when the fire department arrives, the first thing they do, shut off the gas and electric service. And basically that locks down the fuel cells. They go into a shutdown mode and will, you know, not be producing any electricity or consuming any gas in that process. I don't know if I want to pause, pause there and collect any questions. So one of the questions that I have is, as far as the shut off goes, where will that shut off be? And is that something that we would have to do from the street? For example, you know, a curb box or something like that, because we would obviously have to wait for the utility company at that point. Right. So yes, it would be at the street and you're literally starving the fuel cell of its fuel. So it has no choice but to shut down.
And with that location, is that accessible in flood, flood conditions?
I think it can be, I, I think that, that's a good question, and I think it's a, a design parameter that can certainly be built in. So did, it, that's a really good point. So I think that can be a design requirement. Ordinarily, it's not an issue, you know, for most building design for the gas and electric shut off. But I think in this case, we want to keep both of those things above floods, flood level. That's pretty much the only question that I have at this moment. Thank you.
I mean, anything else that you feel that it would be important for Sean to see tonight? Not noise, not, okay, that's good. All right. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Like I said, it's, it's just serendipitous that we have him here with us tonight. Okay. And we have a memo from Terabella basically confirming what you said with regards to the changes that you've made. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else before we get into the discussion of the secret.
No, in my opinion, everything was addressed. And they came up with a reasonable solution for adding additional shrubs at the rear and the rooftop planner, rooftop planter information is concise and clear and everything's included.
Now, or before we do this and we can stop the screen sharing, before, before you get into this detailed discussion of secret, I just want to reiterate where we are in the process with this project. It's been a while since we described this when we first received the application. We are nearing the end, if not the end, we'll find out about that in a short while, of the environmental review, which was the first step of this project. By no means would mean that depending on how we, how we go tonight, this means that the project is approved or not. The next step, we, the, the applicants can't move through the steps of the process until we do a secret determination of signal. The next step would be for the applicant to go to the zoning board. They are currently requesting multiple variances in order to move forward with this project as it's currently proposed. So that would be the next step and the, the zoning board, there's, there's for parking and multiple, I think there's five of them in total. So that's going to be scrutinized and reviewed and plenty of opportunity for public comment at the zoning board level. And then zoning board is finished and assuming they can come to some sort of agreement with the applicant as to how the project's going to look, either with or without variances, if the project comes back to the planning board. For complete site plan review. And so am I missing anything? Either AKRF or Teresa? No, no. Okay, so let's discuss where we are with the environmental review. And we do have a memory, a memo, a summary memo from AKRF and a draft of a environmental assessment form to begin our discussion. Alicia, do you want to walk us through AKRF's opinion of where we are with this? I'm not sure every member of the planning board is going to agree with you, but why don't we start with this?
All right, so we have a draft form of the EAF, of course, subject to discussion. For most of them, we were inclined towards either no or small impact. But of course, those are all subjects to, to change. So if you guys, if you want to walk through, if you had any questions about any of the particular, any of the particular decisions, we can talk about that.
Can I suggest you screen share the form, Alicia?
Sure, I can do that.
I mean, obviously the big issue here is that this is in the flood zone and we, the site was inundated with a large amount of water. And I, I don't know the exact number of what Van Rand's place, but you know, it was 12 to 14 feet in other places Ida in September. And we've had multiple conversations with this applicant and they've done multiple changes to the building in order to address that. So the whole concept of the secret review is whether there is a significant environmental impact that has not been mitigated.
I'm, I'm having some, I'm not sure, do I, do I have screen sharing capabilities right now? I'm not seeing the option.
I'm not sure, do I, do I have screen sharing capabilities right now? Not seeing the option.
You should. Says you do. Is it a form that we posted on the site? I can, I can share it for you if you need to.
I'm not sure. Let me, let me check. I know it was shared with the board. Let me see here.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the, it's the second to last item I see in all of the materials.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will get it off the website.
Brittany, sure.
Thanks.
So the whole question is, um, you know, you only need one significant environmental. Impact that's not been mitigated. For a positive declaration. The question is, uh, how do you define significant and whether there's been mitigation? But so let's just walk kind of walk through this. Brittany, got it?
Is this what we're looking for? Yep. That's which page?
Yeah, can you make it a little larger?
You know, just, just a thought, I'd like to, maybe there's some we go fast. I'd, I'd like to at least. Hit on each of the sections, maybe. Maybe we just go through it. I don't know what you were thinking, Kathy.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. However, I mean, whatever makes sense. I mean, you know. We, we did get the secret, I mean, if people didn't have the secret handbook and didn't look at it and did get it today and you know. What we have to consider in order to make a determination, either positive or negative. Um, we do need to consider every aspect of the project, which I think we have, we've done, and we do need to consider this form. Uh, and every aspect of the form. So this is all part of it. So let's go through it. Okay. Alicia, you good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I think there are going to be a lot of these items that won't apply. So maybe we just start like go through it. Like my first question was on one A. How do we know where the water table is? Did somebody test that? And I, I think rather than water table, if we substituted the word aquifer, it might. Mean something different to, to people. So is there, is there a test? Is there science to back that up?
Yes, um, during construction or during the design phase, we had gone through field testing. Test hall was, a deep test hall was completed and we encountered groundwater at a depth of eighty-four inches.
And, and you, how many sites on, how many, how many test pits did you put on the site?
It's a very small site. It wouldn't be need to do any more than that.
Okay. And, and generally speaking, does, does groundwater or an aquifer or water table vary with the time of the year and the?
Yes, but one day it can fluctuate. However, part of what we're looking for is modeling in the soil where you see where the water moves in and out. At, at high points and we're, we're looking for the high point that it may occur at, which. Um, in this case, we didn't encounter any. And so what we, we saw was at the eighty-four inch mark is where groundwater was relatively stationary.
Stay relatively stable. Okay. Um, and.
Been a part and a lot of the, the part of that is because you have a, you had a very high percolating soil of thirty inches per hour. So it means a very sandy soil. So it's not that water would get, it gets trapped and takes longer to move through. It moves through very quickly.
Okay. I had another question that I discussed. Oh, do we, do, Michael, do you know this, the answer to this question? How high was the water during IDA last September at that site?
Um, I think the owners here and they can, they can attest to that.
Brittany, I think Brendan O'Hearn is here as an attendee.
Let me know if it works because I can't see you guys because I'm screen sharing. Okay, should have worked.
Yeah, I did. I think Brendan, you're on mute.
Do we have him?
He's still on mute.
I can't see him.
Yeah, this is Brendan here. Hello. It was about thirty inches above the floor level of the house and the houses is about three feet above street level. So it was five foot six inside the house from the street level. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So, so from ground level, what, can somebody do that math for me?
So.
I believe he said thirty inches plus three feet is five and a half feet above.
Five and a half feet. He just said five point six.
Is that above ground level?
About, above the, the street level, yeah.
Which is elevation, uh, is that around twenty-two, Michael?
The building, right around the building is, is pretty much around twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So that would put you at twenty-six and a half elevation.
Yeah, I think that's, and I think that's where we're, what we had, we're figuring is around elevation twenty-six, give or take.
That's, okay. So that's interesting because I think the other, the far end of the block. Was actually ten or twelve feet above. Above street level. So there must be some sloping off there. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, one page one. So anybody have any other comments then? Is he, is that how you want to do it? You want to just. Go section by section page, you know, page by page and, you know, everything here is checked, no or small impact.
That would be the best way to do it, Kathy. So the question is really, we all agree there's an impact on land. And the only question is A through G, should any of those be moderate to large? And, you know, looking at, just looking at the list, does anybody have any questions about the box that's been checked?
Doesn't sound like anybody does. Move on to the next section and on the top of page two, which is impact on geological features. And that box is checked, no. There's no destruction of cliffs, dunes and minerals, caves, unless there's an underground cave there that we don't know about, but.
Sounds like there's sand underneath.
It sounds like there's sand, sandy soil. Anybody, everybody good with no impact on geological features? Okay. Okay, impacts on surface water. Impacts on wetlands, streams, rivers, ponds, lakes. Again, this whole section is checked, no.
And this, this is where I was just going to ask about something Cindy already brought up, which is that. You know, my understanding is there's sort of an aquifer under parts of Mamaronek, maybe around here. What, what, what are we looking for in here? I mean, obviously there's no. Surface water other than the Mamaronek River here, um, but are you, is, is they trying to get at? Anything else?
I'm sorry, Seamus. There is a section for groundwater. That's where you would talk about the aquifer. So this is really to ferret out whether there's any surface water in the parcel and whether that surface water is being affected. By dredging turbidity or, or, um, soil erosion or anything like that.
Got it. Okay.
It would sound like no is the, is the correct answer.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any surface waters on the property.
Keep going.
Top, top of page three, now the impact on groundwater.
There we go.
Here we go. So, uh, we have the draft, uh, check of no. So Brittany, scroll down to the next page of, uh. Yeah, right there. Section four, impact on groundwater. Okay, who wants to talk about an aquifer?
Well, let's, let's talk about the questions first. Okay. And there's H for other impacts. So I just want to make sure that we're orderly, just to make sure we're not missing something.
That's why you're here, Teresa. It's why you get paid the big bucks. Okay.
So there, no, this is served with public water. So A is really irrelevant here.
Yeah, we don't have any water wells. Yeah.
And the next question B has to do with water supply demand from. A local supplier aquifer and we don't, there's no indication that, that this use of water is going to. Cause any of those issues. Same way with C. And D, because it's a public sewer. E, again, they're focusing on water supply wells. F, um, I don't believe that they're. Storing bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater and aquifer. They've put. The utilities and everything on the roof essentially to make sure that it doesn't come into contact with it and. And really, uh, gas doesn't do that anyhow. This natural gas doesn't do that anyhow. So. Um, and then the last has to do with the commercial application pesticides within a hundred feet of potable drinking water. Or irrigation sources also not, not, not an issue for purposes of this. So, uh, so the only question is. Do you want to deal with the aquifer question, Seamus and Cindy, that you guys have? In the context of an impact on groundwater? Or do you want to address that in the context of an impact on flooding?
Yeah.
It's the next question.
Yeah, for, for me, I think the latter because it's not like there's, I think that there's drinking water being used for that or hopefully contamination going into it. I don't know Cindy or brothers.
Flooding, flooding, flooding.
Okay, okay. And then we can go straight to five.
So Brittany, you can scroll down to the bottom half of that page. And here we are, um, impact on flooding and obviously that's checked, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So the first question is, and we just want to confirm this. We're not in it, I don't believe you're in a designated floodway. That would actually be part of the estuary or the river or whatever. So. So that, that's answered, no. Um, and then B and C are definitely yes. So I think this is, this is the issue for, for the board.
Training pad and D is, uh. Does it require any modification of existing drainage patterns? Will it change floodwater flows to contribute to flooding? Damn, there's. On the site, no, there is a dam, but not. Okay, so the, those are the questions on flooding. Okay, so this, so the question then is that, um. Maybe we come back to it after we finish the form.
That's right.
Well, if, if you'd like, I, I could address it right now. From one of the documents that we had submitted for the flood storage analysis plan. Your choice, whichever you'd like.
Yeah, why, I mean, why, why don't we address it now? I mean, the question for the board is whether there's a significant environmental impact and significant. Is a, uh, a term that's not well defined in the law. It's left, uh, to a little bit, uh. Subjective, uh, but we have to consider two, two factors, magnitude and importance. Those were the two things that are in the law that we need to consider. Regards to the definition of significance. So.
Okay, so can I, can I suggest in the interest of getting through the form? And then discussing the moderate to large impacts that have been addressed, maybe.
The end.
At the end, I love that. That's what.
That was kind of my first instinct, but since Michael popped up, okay. All right. Okay. So right now we have, we're, we have two, uh, yeses checked.
That's right. And I guess my only question is. E, the proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. Does everybody feel that's a no or small impact may occur? Sorry. And Edward.
So, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, E, yeah. We change floodwater flows. Well, isn't the purpose of the building and the storage and whatnot not to do that?
Yeah, I think that's been mitigated as, you know, as much as possible. That, that one doesn't, I, I would, I would agree. It's a small or.
Yeah.
No impact.
Great. I just wanted to be sure. That's all.
And are we making, or is the idea that that's covered by the. On-site plans? I know we're going to hear more about that from Michael, but you know, at least. Anecdotally, I often hear about the flow of the direction of water in the very flooded conditions. People have lived there for a long time and see things changing as development comes in. I mean, is it, has it been studied, you know, how water moves and how having a bigger building there would just impact everything around in, in one of the. You know, the conditions where that's under ten feet of water?
Well, there's a building there now. It's a small site. I mean, I, I don't know how big, much bigger the footprint here is here and Michael could probably. Speak to that, but.
Existing building is recessed from the street though.
Existing building is, it's not right out on the street.
Right.
Michael can talk about this a little bit more. There's, there's also no, uh, stormwater infrastructure there now. So in the event of a flood, there, I mean, there's just nothing to retain water on site. Control the flow of stormwater. Um, and so we are proposing to. Accept and not release all of the stormwater volume from a storm event. So Michael, I don't know if you have anything to add. That's a little more technical.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's definitely one of the main points and we're, all the stormwater is being taken and actually infiltrated. Again, we have very good percolation rates. As well as the flood storage volume that we're, we're providing. In the proposed condition. Actually exceeds what is available in the existing condition.
Well, that's stormwater. This is about flood flows. So the question is. Does the placement of the structure on the property or the change between the existing structure and proposed structure? Effect how floodwater flows will. Act in that area or not.
That's a great question and the current building is not, does not meet flood. Development and FEMA standards because it, it predates that. The building we're proposing is going to be lifted. In fact, that's one of the variances we need from the zoning board. So we're lifting it, uh, nearly eight feet above the base flood elevation. FEMA and Village standards require only two feet above. So we're lifting the building eight feet above base flood. Right? To allow the floodwater to move freely. And that actually goes to, you know, what we'll talk about with flooding. A little bit later and in terms of the impact to, to the flood zone, right? Because we're going above and beyond, um, flood development standards. And greatly improving the condition as it exists now.
Yeah, that, that I think addresses it pretty directly because do you mean that the, the. The lot now will allow floodwater, whether it's receding or moving or whatever, to, to move. Better than currently, right?
Correct, as, as it has to. I mean, that's what, and Greg from Sullivan Architecture knows a lot more about this than I do, but. The requirements for, for development in a flood zone require that. So you know, right now you have a building that doesn't comply with that and it's not allowing the, the flow of floodwater.
What we're proposing. The building is lifted, but the, but there's still the garage and the cars.
Yeah, so.
You know, it's not like there's nothing there and water can just flow through. You have a garage, you have cars. And also, um, the building as proposed is, is, um. Not having any side setbacks. I think the side setbacks are going to zero. So. That, that's an issue for me.
So the garage is going to be equipped with the required flood vents to allow the flow of water in back and forth. It's not a solid wall. Uh, and also the side yard setback, we only need that variance because of the queuing platform that we're putting at the second floor. Um, if that's not the, the footprint of the building, that's only a second floor queuing platform that Harbor Coastal requested that we incorporate. Um, and in correspondence with emergency responders, that was something that we added to the project later on, um, but it does encroach. Um, but it does encroach into the side yard setback, even though it's not at grade.
Okay, so when you talk about the queuing platform, you mean the place where people go if there's flooding, so they can get out? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you. Some of us are so far into this, thank you, Teresa. It's helpful.
All right, okay, then I think we can go on to six and knowing that we're going to come back to B and C, okay.
Come back to B and C, right. Okay, impacts on air. Um, this is checked, yes. Um, but everything's checked, no or small impact.
Yeah, this, this section of the EAF is really meant more for like a power plant or something that's going to have an air emission source that's not associated with, you know, residential housing typically. Um, so they're not close to any of these thresholds. And I believe they confirmed that they don't even need a state air registration for the, for what they're proposing to put here. Is that correct, Kristen?
Yes, that's correct, because there's no onsite combustion that's occurring.
So really, the, the form should be checked, no, for impacts on air.
You, you could do it that way. There, there is, there are some pollutants that are being emitted, but not in the quantities that they have listed here, Cindy.
Not a thousand tons a year of.
Who writes these things? Where do they live?
D C, D C does the, they create the forms. Whoops.
Okay, all right, everybody comfortable with six? Let's move on to seven, plants and animals. The proposed action may result in the loss of flora or fauna. And it's checked, no. I don't think anybody's going to, uh, disagree with that.
No.
It brings us to eight, impact on agricultural resources. That's a no. Okay, uh, nine, impact on, impact on aesthetic resources. That's also a no. See, is there a scenic resource there? On the site? I don't think so, you know. Everybody good on that? And then we have ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources. And this is checked, yes, that the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historical archaeological resource. Is that because the building's old?
It may be something that's automatically checked.
Yeah, it's probably automatically checked, I don't know.
Yeah, Michael, I, I think it was automatically checked because of the retaining walls on the Marineric River.
Uh, maybe Alicia, they, they care for the South for our sake, Alicia can do.
Right, so, so this was matched, um, very helpfully, since they have the, the references here, this was, uh, matched to the submitted, uh, part one. So, likely what happens.
Part one, okay.
Right, so something, one of these questions, you know, was, was marked yes, but on, you know, the specific analysis, it was either no or pretty small.
Okay, okay, so that, so Kristen, if you guys checked it, yes, you checked it because of the river?
It, um, here it says, uh, archaeological site inventory.
Right.
Is that filled in now? Okay. I'm just trying to look through the EF here.
All right, I don't think, I don't think anybody really.
But, yeah, it's the last page. It's the Sheldon Drake River retaining.
Okay, sorry.
Right.
Okay, all right, we're going fast for you, Brittany. Eleven, impact on open space and recreation. Now that's checked, no. Impact on a critical environmental area, that's checked, no. I don't think that's designated a critical environmental area. Impact on transportation? No. Impact on energy, yes. Uh, proposed action may cause an increase in the use of energy. From a single family home or multiple, uh, I don't know, it's, I think it's in one family.
Pretty much always yes, and it's no or small impact may occur because it's just the way they have the question, you've just got to say yes, because they're four units, but.
Right. You're going from four units to ten units.
Right.
Impact on noise, odor and light. That's also checked, yes, with small, um, with small, no, no or small impact on noise levels. And we had a discussion about the noise level from the, uh, the uh, mechanicals and the, uh, fuel cells on the roof. No, blasting, no. Odors from more than an hour a day, no. Okay, light shining into, joining probably, no. Impact on human health. Uh, new or existing sources of contaminants, that's checked, no. Consistency with community plans. Uh, it's not, and the question is, is, is it not consistent? And the answer is no. It's consistent, there are several buildings, uh, right with it. And, uh, consistency with community character, and that too is checked, no. That brings us back to impact on flooding. The action is in a, uh, one hundred year floodplain and a five hundred year floodplain. So, that's five, bottom of page.
Five, B and C.
Yeah, five, B and C, the bottom of page three. Okay, those are the two, those, that's the big question here. This is in the flood zone. And, you know, everybody knows still smart and from, uh, from Ida. And, uh, this application came in right after that. And, uh, you've done a lot of work. I don't know, uh, Michael, you wanted to say a few words about this?
Yeah, I, I, if I could have a share screen, I could bring it right up, and I think that would be helpful.
Okay, I don't think we need the form anymore on, on the screen, so you could take yours down and give Michael.
Okay, so this is one of the, this is one of the, the documents we had submitted. Uh, this is, was a flood storage analysis that we had prepared. So the different colors represent different elevations on the site. Um, if you look to the one on the left, that's existing conditions, the units on the, are the, the diagram on the right is the proposed conditions. Um, we put together a summary of the, the flood storage volume at each elevation, so what we're, would the intent of this plan is to demonstrate that at each of the elevations on the site, we're not taking up any flood storage volume at that elevation, because you may have some storms and only floods to elevation um, twenty, so if, just because you provide more volume at a higher elevation, it doesn't mean you're, you, you, you've mitigated it at the same elevation. Uh, so in this case, at elevation um, nineteen and below, both have, we, we have no storage below that level. Um, and the existing conditions at elevation twenty and below, we have nine hundred and seventy-nine square feet, or I'm sorry, cubic feet of storage volume. In the existing conditions, in the proposed conditions, that actually increases a twelve hundred and twenty cubic feet of storage. Um, and, and keep going all the way up in the end for, um, the total flood storage volume within that, we're greater in, on, we have more flood storage volume being provided at each of the, at each of the incremental storage levels. And in total, at the end, uh, you can see right down here, we go from nine hundred and nine, nine thousand two hundred and sixty-three cubic feet of storage, uh, within the site below elevation twenty-two, and we've increased that to ten thousand nine fifteen. It was seventeen hundred cu- cubic feet additional storage that's being provided. But at the same time, with, but that doesn't, that doesn't also account for, we have rainwater that goes lands and falls on the existing building, that water is not mitigated or provided treatment for. That water actually drops to the ground and contributes to, uh, flooding in the area. So in the proposed condition, what we're actually doing is, in addition to providing an additional seventeen hundred cubic feet of flood storage volume, we're actually now taking any roof water that was previously dropping to the ground and contributing to flooding. And we're taking that offline, so overall, it, there's a, a net benefit. And so, i- i- in my opinion, the, the actual answer would be, no, we're not providing, having any major impacts, because we're actually providing more flood storage volume. Uh, the report, the footprint of the proposed building, the, for the first floor, that's also going to have flood vents. So that, the, the building will actually be able to be flooded going in and out, and we, we've had conversations about it. Um, and the finishes in that, and within the building are, will be made to accommodate flood sto- flood, flooding to happen. So they'll be washable, so they're not, won't be under construction every single time it floods. Those surfaces will, will be made to to do, to survive getting flooded.
And something additional, I just wanted to add on, on that note, and the note of how high we're, we're lifting the building. Uh, the secret handbook does talk about development in a flood zone in terms of impacts. Uh, and one of the considerations is if we're exceeding floodplain development standards. Um, in this case, we're going, like I said, eight feet above the base flood elevation. Um, and we're, we're exceeding that, we're improving existing conditions, so all of that contributes to uh, no significant adverse impact. If anything, as Michael said, it's, it's a significant improvement compared to the existing building and the existing conditions.
Okay, but in a storm like Ida, which we used to think, you know, was a rare occurrence and the storms are getting more frequent and more severe. In the scheme of things, a- and I think you've done an excellent job with the building. I, I think it's state of the art. I'm very impressed. Um, but in the scheme of things, any extra storage or handling of water here is literally inconsequential when the whole area is inundated with between six and twelve feet of water that, um, doesn't always come from rain. So I'm discounting the rain aspect that, that, uh, Michael described, while it's important. In a major flood event, with riverine flooding from all those rivers flowing into that area, I still have a, a problem increasing the number of people living in harm's way. No matter how good the building is designed, a- and I, I absolutely applaud you for that. But at some point, yeah, I know about the evacuation potential, but and the fact that they will still have power and they could, they could ride out a few days if they can't leave the building, but the, a- at some point, our first responders are going to be stressed beyond, um, capacity. We, we may al- already be there. We, we don't know. Uh, but there was certainly, there's certainly anecdotal, um, evidence that people were looking to be rescued on the first night of Ida, and no one could get to them. It, it's impossible unless you have a fleet of Zodiacs that's going to go around to each building. At what point do we? I don't know what this village is going to do. The Army Corps plan is not going to be the answer, but, um, it, it, because it's not going to solve the flooding issue. So, I, I, you know, this is one project in a floodplain um, with more increasing, um, violent storms. So, a- as good as this is, I, looking at the entire area, I, I don't see how the village can keep new residents safe. I, and I hope somebody can find a way to address that, but that's kind of what I'm looking for. Uh, maybe there isn't anything, but I am reticent to, you know, to intensify residential use in this area when we can't, we, we have no way to keep people safe.
So right now, onsite, there are two large units, which at one time, and I know Brandon's on, he can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe during Hurricane Ida, there were about ten people who lived there. The ten units we're proposing, six of them are one bedroom units. Right, so the number of people we're proposing to add to the flood zone is, is incre- is, is very small. Um, I know the units ten to two looks large. But the reality is the number of people that could be there now, that could be there in the next storm, that were there in Ida, is not far off from the number of people from, from the increase we're proposing in a much safer condition with much better flood volume storage and much better emergency evacuation procedures. So I don't know, Brendan, if you have anything to add to that, or, or Greg?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have a unit there right now, and if we don't get permission here, all we're going to do is put the units back in. Put, fix up the units and rent us, it's a four bedroom unit, there's a three bedroom upstairs. And put people in real harms ways. Right now, we have taken everybody out of and we have made every effort to do that, so with the fuel cells, the platform, people can stay in the building. And we're making a situation, I mean, safe, if you ask me, so we can put it, people in danger and go back in and finish the units. And that's there. And the basement, there's a basement there also, and that fills up with water. We're taking away the basement, we're taking away the first floor. And we're bringing everybody above, well above the flood elevation. So, we're making the situation really, really better here, so, and the other, only other option, if we don't get approval for this, we're going to put people, like the last time, there was, I think, seven people, that was, they weren't at home at the time, there was only two people at home at the time, but there was two people that had to go upstairs to avoid the flood.
Can I ask? Sense that it's an incremental, but, I mean, I think all of us are reluctant to put people in harm's way. That, uh, you've addressed the fact that people, if, if they took the necessary precautions, you know, uh, moved their cars, stocked up on food, they should be able to stay for some, and their medications or whatever, you know, and I, I've heard this one, what if somebody has a heart attack? Well, yeah, what if somebody has a heart attack? So maybe we have to remove one person or two people or something. Um, you got, I forget what you just called it, but the, uh, the staging area to try to get people, uh, off the build, out of the building. The buildings across the street, the building across the street from that, at the same day that I met Sean, uh, Sean at the garden, I also met someone who lives across the street and had to climb over a parapet uh, with his wife, he's not a young person, but he's not that old either. But he had to climb over a parapet and, uh, there was a drop to, well, it was, the water wasn't all the way up to the parapet. And he had to, they had to kind of jump into a, uh, soft bottom boat, which, uh, was full of water and not fun. Um, we, we can address that with some sort of, uh, a way to have where your staging area to remove people is with, uh, and the boats below them, you can kind of figure that out. I'm sure some engineer can come up with something somewhere along the lines. But here's my question, and my question is to our land use attorney. The zoning code allows housing. Uh, now granted, you need a lot of variances, um, to that code for various things, including height. Uh, so that it, you do have the flow through of the water. Um, but we do allow housing, as much as you'd like to not put more people in harm's way. Um, we have to follow the laws, we have to follow the secret law, and we have to follow the codes of the village, so Teresa, uh, and please advise us on how, how far can we take this? You know, applicant is mitigate, you know, a lot of things to mitigate this, uh, just give us some advice, please.
Sure, sure, from the, from a zoning perspective, the use is allowed. Um, the variants that are, variances that are requested are area variances related to dimensional issues with respect to the structure. Okay, so they don't really go to, um, the number of people or really the number of units in, in that sense. So, um, I think the on, the only variance that they are now requesting, which really is inconsistent with the zoning, given the characteristics of the site, is the desire to drop the affordable housing unit. Okay, which will go before the, go before the zoning board of appeals with that question. So this area of the town, under the current zoning code, allows this type of housing, and it's being used for multifamily housing now, and it's next to a large multifamily housing unit, and there's one across the street as well. So, um, so the, I don't think the planning board is in a So um, so the, I don't think the planning board is in a position to say, you know, we can decide not to allow residential units in this location. The question for the planning board is, does it for those areas where you are concerned, and that's clearly being in the hundred-year floodplain and the five-hundred-year floodplain, looking at the baseline conditions at the site and the design that they've proposed, is there gonna be a significant adverse environmental effect? Or by complying with and going beyond the requirements, have they, to the extent they possibly can, mitigated any future potential envi- environment, adverse environmental effects? That's, that's the question. That's, and and that's wholly within the discretion of of the planning board to decide.
Okay, so that's the question. All right.
Can I ask one quick question on just what's on the screen before we lose it?
Sure.
So I think I have a guess, but I'll just ask. So if you, the surface area is larger in the proposed than existing, is the building not included? I guess it's not colored in?
Michael, that's a question for you.
Well, Michael's looking at that. I know the building footprint we're proposing is smaller than the existing building footprint.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm basically trying to figure out is if you add up the surface area in the first column, it's like five thousand existing, sixty-four hundred proposed. I just wanna make sure that the additional storage isn't an accident of looking at more space. And Michael, I think you might be on mute. I'm not sure if you're speaking or not, but.
Sorry, I I'll go back and double check. I I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
And it, it, it could, it could be very important a- a- in that I think the thesis here is that there's more flood storage, but if it wasn't compared correctly, then I don't know that I'm confident in that conclusion at the moment.
And it, let me just say, it is perfectly fine for the planning board to need additional information. That's why I said, you know, it's important that you have all the information you need to make a determination.
Do we have any kind of opinion from the first responders? Um, again, you know, it's all incremental. Um, you know, i- in terms of their confidence in in evacuating people, cuz I I mean, that's that's really my only, my only issue here. I know that, you know, obviously, this can be developed according to the zoning code with or without variances, depending on how that goes. Um, y- you know, it maybe something as simple as requiring, this is a rental building, if if I recall properly, that that all the leases or or you know, they they do an annual drill, or they have to, you know, comply with evacuation notices. I mean, that would solve a lot of the problem if everybody just evacuated with with an early warning system. Uh, I mean, we we've gotta give people a fighting chance and and sheltering in place in a building for three or four days. You know, it's not so much fun, even even if you don't have a heart attack.
So Cindy, that the owners of the building would do exactly that. Um, and that goes to to moving cars too, right? Just moving, not just moving people. Um, so they would be uh, willing to to agree to a a similar condition. As I mentioned before, we did, we have been including the emergency responders on our plans. John Sullivan's office has has reached out and had discussions with them. It's my understanding that, and I think we had talked a little bit about this a few months ago, um, given the nature of those positions, there there isn't gonna be anything put into writing um, about the project, but they have been looped in. We have received feedback. We've made significant amendments to the plans based on that. And um, to your point, which is a great one, I mean, a lot of it is is management and preparedness, which which is excellent. And I, you know, Brendan's on, but I I think I speak for him when I say they, that's absolutely something that they would agree to.
Is that, is that something that you can amend, quote unquote, amend your application to state, Kristin? So we have it in the record?
Um, to state, well, I know we 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 do have in the record from a few months ago stating that we would have a emergency evacuation plan and emergency management plan. We work with the the village to figure out what that was. When we reached out, there wasn't an existing template, um, and I think this is going back to to February or March. Um, so you know, that's already in the record, but if there's something additional that goes above and beyond whatever would be encompassed in that, we we could certainly do that.
Well, I think it would be easier for the planning board members to to make a finding with respect to seeker if they, if they had what the components of that evacuation plan are gonna be. Um, a- am I right, Cindy? That's, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, I, ye- yes, essentially, um, and and some way to implement it so in five years, it it it's still there. And I I don't know what that is, and maybe there's something else out there that I don't know about that that first responders might know would be helpful. I I mean, this you know, people build in the floodplain all the time, but maybe they don't take a lot of precautions. And if, you know, you're willing to do the paperwork, which you know, and 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 be as robust in a plan to keep tenants and visitors apprised of what's going on, I I that, that would help me.
Well, you know, just, you know, there's a lot of things at play here. Now, there were a lot of buildings built in that area uh, before Ida. They weren't uh, you know, they were raised and on the ground floor, there was only parking, and everybody was supposed to move their cars, but during Ida, nobody moved their cars and and thousands of cars were lost in the village dramatic. The same thing with the Avalon building. They too were supposed to move their cars, and nobody moved their cars. New people moved in, it's a rental, it's a short-term rental, new people moved in. They weren't told the fact that, you know, you're in a floodplain, and they didn't do their homework, whatever. There was a lot of property loss and a lot of evacuations uh, had to be uh, had to be made. But we are in a village that's going to continue to flood. I don't think anybody thinks anything different. Um, and it's going to get worse as as climate changes. We have to learn to live with this. If it means that we need more assistance uh, in times of emergency, I mean, I asked the question, I don't remember who answered this for me, and it might even have been Sean, about how many how many boats we had, and what type of boats, and how many were operating at any one time. You know, I was under the impression that there weren't that many, but there are a lot, there, uh, the answer was there are a lot more than I thought, and I don't remember the details of this. It was in passing at it, not another event. We 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 have to learn how to live with this somehow. Um, and I don't know what the answer is. Uh, but an emergency management plan for a rental building and and making sure that all new renters, anybody who comes in there knows what they're getting themselves into. Um, and that they they have to pay attention to the warnings. So, just move something, my computer screen changed, okay. You know, they they sign a lease, and they sign a, they sign a statement says, I understand that, you know, there are things I'm gonna have to do if there are flood warnings, and pay attention to them.
But but to be practical, Kathy, that's not a very good marketing slogan.
I understand that, but we have to find, I mean, human beings are human beings, you know? They're gonna have to get dragged out, you know?
Well, well, I think, you know, what Ida showed us, you know, the prior storms, I think it was the regulars, the old timers, the people who have lived there in generations, they're used to flooding, not that it's any easier for them, but it wasn't such a surprise. But what we saw were people's possessions, and people were devastated, and they had no idea they lived in a flood-prone area. And it was that lack of knowledge that made them think, oh, you know, it's just a drill. I don't really have to evacuate, but human nature, I can't fight that either.
I mean, I, you know, even, I I, you know, even people who literally had a commercial property right next to the river said there were just so many warnings, and they just kept changing them. I mean, they didn't do anything. They didn't do anything. I mean, that, you know, the, my garage, luckily, my car wasn't there, but they lost thirty clients' cars. They didn't move anything. So, so, okay, you can do the best you can, but people are gonna be people, but with fair warning, you know, like, y- y- you know, you're right. There's a lot of turnover, and there's a lot of new people in those buildings. They were caught completely unaware. Um, so where are we? Um, do we feel like we would like more information? Seamus, you want, you want to check those numbers? Teresa suggested that maybe we flesh out a little bit an emergency management plan before we finalize this.
And just, you know, I, looking through and going through the numbers here, uh, the reason why that building wasn't counted is because we're, we're up to elevation twenty-two, which is the flood zone elevation. Um, at elevation twenty-two, there's no penetrations through the foundation, so there'd be no water getting in to flood the basement.
So is that, um, and just help me, right? Cuz you're the engineer here. Wouldn't you wanna compare surface area to surface area? Should you add different heights, or are you going to a height because of?
So basically, no, no, so basically, above, everything above elevation twenty-two, the entire site's gonna flood in both conditions.
Okay.
So but up to that elevation, since there's no penetrations in the, in the foundation for water to 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 get into, eh, that's actually, it doesn't, you you, you have no flooding there.
John, do you have anything you can add there? Maybe I I'm having trouble understanding.
Oh, I understand what Michael's saying, and we'll take a careful look at it.
Yeah.
No offense, Michael, the failure's mine, not yours, but.
No, no, I'm, it's, I'll definitely work with John. That's not a problem at all.
I I I get it. I do get it in intuitively, but I would like to be able to make more sense of the actual tables. It would almost be like at, at a flood level of some amount, you know, and in both conditions, how much water's on site, and I think that's kind of what this is doing, but maybe we can all try to get a little.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a careful look at it.
Yeah, but so Kathy, you half asked me a question a minute ago. Um, and so the, the two, to, if you wanna ask me all the way, I think that, that table, and then the other thing that we brought up earlier that I think is important is probably understanding what the plan is to shut the gas off specifically. Um, if it's in a flooded condition, cuz I think we do have, you know, effectively this mini power plant on the top, which the the um presentation that was provided was really helpful. You know, um, things like noting that the emissions are half of what the downstate element of the grid is, that's, that's exactly responsive to what I was thinking, but I think that the safety aspect of getting that gas turned off, which that, you know, the applicant raised, clearly, that's what they wanna do in a flooded condition is probably the other key, key item for me.
Yeah, I I'd be interested to know how, how far off the ground that shut-off is gonna be. So i- if it's only six feet off the ground, it's gonna be inundated? So.
Since we have representatives from the building department here, is there anyone who could shed a little bit light, of light on that for us right now in terms of all the new development that's happened in the recent years and uh, what the standard is for the emergency shut-off?
So this is Dennis from the building department. So um, majority emergency setups should be readily available, right? The code specifies that in multiple places and fire code as well. Um, there probably will be a selenoid valve attached to the unit on the roof. So if there was a fire or something like that, or a leak, that would indicate it, and there would be a a shut-off at that point upstairs. Um, beyond that, coming down on the riser, yeah, I mean, there could be one at an apartment level, there could be multiple shut-offs, you know, so if a resident knows that there is a um, a flood, they can hit a relay, and that relay can turn off a main valve located close to the rooftop or secondary. That's all to the design professional for the system. Um, there could also be, you know, as a building inspector, we don't design your buildings, right? So just keep that in mind as I'm responding to this. These are just things I'm throwing out. Um, also, there's, there's flood sensors, there's water sensors, there's humidity sensors. Um, that could be wired or relayed into the system to indicate there's five feet of water outside in the measuring tube, which is giving the elevation of the floodwater, and that would automatically shut off that uh, that feed to the power supply, either electric or or gas, propane, if it will. Um, so that, that, you know, those are just a couple of things that can, can be done. A simple alarm by your garage door to let you know that there's water inside triggers your, your, your fire alarm in your house to let you know that there's floodwater, or there's watering entering your home. There's Bluetooth devices. It gets very simple. So, you know, the design professional who's working on that component will definitely be able to find a source or 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 something to assist in disconnecting the uh, the gas than using the 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 curb box that will be submerged. I mean, six inches of water, the box is almost rendered useless cuz you gotta find it. That's the hard thing. So, you know, if there's something mounted on the side of the building, what height? Six feet, eight feet, fifteen feet? You know, everything's subject to change. You know, if, for instance, there's another container that that comes down the road and lands against the shut-off outside the building, that's rendered useless. There's a gas station next door, there's cars that can all be pushed against the building. You know, so having something that's probably located internally where a residence or a a smart system, we're using that that flow sensor or switch to turn it off would probably be the better route of going. Uh, then depending on a outside uh, manual turn-off that could be obstructed or blocked or buried or underwater.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a few items that we would like to uh, add to the record before we make our final determination. Is that a fair assessment of where we are, planning board?
It, it, yes, but I guess my question is, I I mean, I think we know that this is um, an unlisted action, and really, the major question is whether it's going to be positive or negative. Is is that what we're talking about?
Absolutely. This is where we are. We're determining the significance.
Okay.
But for purposes, for purposes of tonight, you know, you have come a long ways. You've agreed on the form, and you've agreed on what your additional questions are. So is there any other uh, additional questions you'd like answered? Because I would, you know, um, when we fill out the part three, it's a little bit involved, because when we look at this issue, we're gonna have to come up with a written reasoned elaboration of whichever way you go. So if there's any additional information you need, now is definitely the time to let us know, so we can be ready to do the part three next time. And the part three is, it's the positive or the negative?
I I think um, just three things that we've identified, the flood storage table, just making sure that everything's good, and John's gonna look at that. And the shut-off we just talked about with Dennis. Emergency management plan, uh, I think um, Ms. Motel had said that they reached out to the village and I didn't there is no model, uh, they didn't get a lot of detail. They'd have to sort of like create it or copy it from someplace else. Um, I don't, I I don't know, how does the board feel about sort of like a not a full-blown emergency management plan, you know, with all the bells and whistles in there, all the I's dotted and T's crossed, but more of a a sort of a conceptual approach or an outline, you know, uh, this is what we're going to be working on, and this is what we're working towards and you know, to uh, move this along.
Well, I think, I think, Kristin, there are plenty of emergency plans out there. Um, and I I'm sure that you can find one that, you know, FEMA promotes. Um, they, they do a lot of those emergency evacuation plans. Um, also, the State Emergency Management Office has those. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure why the village had trouble finding it, but the village would have one as well, because they have you know, a flood, a flood program, you know, a flood permitting program. So I believe that's a requirement of that. I don't, I don't think that's gonna be particularly helpful to you, though, in the context of one, one building.
Building, right.
So I would say, tell us what you're gonna do to make sure that every person who moves in there who's blissfully ignorant is ready to go when there's, when there's a flood. That's really the board's concern.
Right, right. And 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 make sure that it's not something that's done with the first tenants, and then it sort of dies like it did at the Avalon. You know, and then, you know, five, ten years from now.
I may have a second. Um, so if, if, going back to the. If I may have a second, um, so if, if going back to the alarms that we discussed a couple, or, or I mentioned a couple of minutes ago. You know, they can be wired into the fire system, or there could be a different sounding strobe. Letting the residents know that there is a, a flood that's happening or there is an occurrence. Um, that's something that could be wired in the system. Now, as for the existing structure that they've presented. They do have the, the rescue area, which is, you know, that, that was nice that they added that there. Um, is that areas sufficient to the operations within the village that, that we currently use? Uh, you know, front loaders, lows, boats, you know, it, it depends on the height of the water. You know, um, and people sheltering in place doesn't mean that they're going to be in place, want to be in place. For a long period of time and, and you're speaking about that and, and you're going through all of it, but. Um, they do have some items in place. They're going to have the fire alarm in there, you know, there's, there's. Definitely ways that they can elaborate on their existing. Um, system and throughout the, throughout the structure, they'll have paths regress mounted by the doors. You know, or, or they, they will be asked that they have a path to be grass indicating the staircase and so forth. So perhaps if they would like to add to that saying in cases of a fire is, you know. This red placard in case of a flood, it's this placard. You know, either way, we're, we're during the times of inspection, it's, it's hard for the building department to. To work with a potential flood that we don't know the elevations, but we can only do. We know what comes at us at that time. It's the only thing we can take care of. So the precautionary period is, you're absolutely right is. You know, shop around, look at other municipalities, look at other. Areas down south, find out what their flood plans are for evacuation or, or sheltering in place and, and expand from there. Thank you.
Um. I think you heard with the, with the last applicant that, uh, we have one more meeting in July. Um, and then we don't meet again until September. Um, obviously two of the three things we just talked about, you probably could get to us by Friday to get on to the agenda for the next meeting. Uh, think about whether you can pull something together. Uh, emergency management plan, we wouldn't have a problem getting you on the agenda for the last meeting in July. Um, since we've done so much work, we're at this point. Um, I don't have a problem with that. I don't think anybody else on the board, there's not a lot of review that people are going to have to do of, of what you submit. So. If you can pull an emergency management plan or put something together, as we just said, as, as Teresa just said, you know, what are you going to be doing type of thing? Um, we have to have it all signed, sealed and delivered. Take it from there. Okay.
Okay.
Every, anybody else, everybody good? We still have one more item on the agenda. It's late. A poor person is waiting to talk to us. Brittany, why don't you, um, let Neil know that we're ready to wrap, we're wrapping up and we're ready for him to come on. All right, okay.
Thank you.
We know where we are. Everybody, everybody understands it. You guys understand where we are? Okay, this brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is just a discussion with, uh. The village's comprehensive plan, uh, update consultant, Neil Desai, and I don't know, remember the name of the firm he's with. If you can fill us in on that. But the planning board's participation in the review of a comprehensive plan.
Kathy, you don't, you don't need me now, right?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Bye. It's nine thirty. Thirty-six and John, we don't need you. And, uh, good night. Mister Ahern, and good night. And even Dennis, we don't probably need you unless you want to hear about the comp plan. We're not going to do anything substantive tonight. But thank you, uh, you were very helpful tonight, you and Sean both. And there's, there's Neil, there he is. Okay, uh, Brittany, could you, uh? Yes, thank you. Okay. I'm so sorry, Neil, this took much longer.
The nature of the beast, uh, you know, I, I.
So. Let me just, uh, and, and I, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the company that you are with.
It's a Hardesty and Hanover.
Harvesty and Hanover. It sounds like a law firm.
It doesn't, fortunately.
Okay. We want to just, uh, uh, sort of have a conversation with you today. The members of the planning board that are here have not really been involved. Uh, with anything with regards to comprehensive plan. Or maybe, maybe any other comprehensive plan. Um, and, uh, we understand from a previous communication with you that you're looking to get comments. On the current draft by the end of the month of July, so that you can do rewrites in August and we have a meeting. On the, uh, the twenty-seventh in July. So that's easy for us to. Put that as our deadline for comments and then. Our consulting planner, who is not with us tonight, but she's represented by Alicia Moore, Ashley Y, who I think you know. Has, has volunteered to, to, uh, put all our comments together and get them to you. So.
Oh, excellent.
Have a plan on how we're going to move forward, but I think that if you could sort of. Uh, fill us in a little bit on, um. What we need to know at this point in order to productively participate in the process. That's one question I have. Many of us looked at the comprehensive plan, uh, in preparation for this meeting, uh, and. Saw that the last draft was, you know, twenty twenty and you started it much before that and. A lot has changed in the village, uh. You know, I don't know if we're going to be updating a lot of the data. Uh, you know, there's a lot of talk about Sandy and, you know, we just had a very long discussion. The planning department no longer exists and there's a lot of reference to the planning department in there. I, I don't think you need those kinds of comments from us.
Right, right.
But like, what, what do we need to know to begin a, a better review? And then what would you like to see from the planning department, the planning board? Um, you know, how, how can we be helpful to the whole process? Um, and, uh, then we can sort of like. Drill down on, on what we need to do and get it done and to you in the next couple of weeks.
Sure, I think, uh, thanks. That's, I, I, well, I appreciate your, uh. Getting in touch with me before I could get in touch with you, uh.
We have a recess in August, so we need to move fast.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, the board of trustees, so, um, the one important thing is that. This, the, the initial impetus for the conference of plan, the initial guidance. I'm, I'm, uh, you know, it's, it's probably embedded in the beginning of this draft, but there was a set of kind of. Principles that the board of trustees wanted the plan to focus on sustainability. Resiliency to a certain degree of more sustainability. Um, although there's, you know, those terms are, are certainly related in certain ways, but we all know what resilience talks about, which is, you know. Flooding and hurricanes and, and resilience to storms and neighborhood character. Uh, and I think, so. I, I think that's, you know, the board of trustees, that was the initial charge. Those are the kind of the sections that. Are the longest in this, in this two thousand twenty draft. You'll notice the. Um, the sustainability chapter is quite, quite thick. Um, and, uh, I mean, which is, which is great. I mean, I think there's been tremendous. Accomplishments that, uh, the village has made with the help of the committee from the environment, the tree committee. And that thing and following through and climate smart things, a commerce word achievements, and that'll continue to be the, the, the case. Um, and then you'll see the residential neighborhood section is, is quite thick. Um, and, but I think there's, um. So a, as far as the planning board, it is, is, you know, the planning board, I think chapters five and chapter six are really the. The crux of what the planning board. Um, I mean, welcome to comment on anything, of course, but chapter five and chapter six are really the two chapters that. Um, are, are, you know, fall within, you know, the things that you go through. Uh, on a, on a weekly or, or, you know, biweekly basis. Um, and there's a, there's a lot of detail and subdivisions. There's a, a lot of detail and, and especially in the chapters five and residential neighborhoods. And so this is always a result of just of, of. You know, the, the impetus, the, the, the goals of the board of trustees that originally. Um, some of them are the same members, but there, I think there are one or two that are different at the time. Now, um, I'm seeing, um. And affordable housing is touched on. But in a not in a, not in the way it needs to be in, in, in this conference of plan. Within chapter five or chapter six, I think. I see that as being a. I mean, without a doubt, one of the, one of the critical. Uh, I mean, it is one of the six goals, I think, the six topic areas in the very beginning of the comp plan that's mentioned, but. I think, uh, with everything I've heard, uh, is, it's, it's, it's really. Um, taken on a, a very, uh, a more urgent, um, status. And so that needs to really come out of that. And so one thing that I've. I, I remember being part of a. Sitting in at one of the board meetings, board of trustee meetings with a affordable housing coalition. Members had given a few presentations, I believe, the civil, you had, or you had actually talked, uh, talked a little bit, I. There have been so many meetings I've been to, I, I probably I don't recall exactly, but. I do have a call set up with them because I wanted to. I'll get a sense of what they've been doing, what things they believe are, are really important that are. Actions that the municipality could take. And so with that, I think, um, I, I want to. Come up with more, um, there's a, you know, there's a, I mean, that's, that's a big ball, it's a humongous ball of wax, affordable housing. And I think it goes from everything from. Uh, you know, and when we, when there was a planning department, I know that. Uh, Greg Cutler's had done a lot of research and digging through and getting a lot of important data. Um, points and, 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 but of course that kind of ended in two thousand eighteen or so. So we have, um, everything from when, when, um. Affordability provisions expire on certain places. Uh, another, I mean, I'm just going to give you a couple of things. So it's mortgages building, it's, it's when do affordability provisions expire? Um, are there, are there, uh, buildings that are susceptible to being, to being purchased, sold and purchased by a new entity? Uh, I mean, it, it covers all kinds of ground and to the extent that a comprehensive, I, I'd like to be able to, to, to the extent that a comprehensive plan. Uh, it can, can, can lay a framework for. Actions toward affordable housing. I think that's something that, um, I believe is. Uh, I, I believe this is an area that, that this next draft. Should do. So it's more than just updating. The draft in, in a lot of senses, it's, it's, it's kind of relooking at the priorities are, which I believe to be affordable housing. Uh, much more, uh, uh, resilience, uh, goes without saying after Hurricane Ida. Um, and so I think affordable housing is one topic that is touched upon, but. It's not appropriately kind of, uh. There's no kind of framework set aside for the, to the village to act upon it now. The, the moratorium study that took place, there was a, that, that was one of the things which actually. Also, uh, kind of put a pause on the comprehensive plan. It was not just COVID, it was also the moratorium study. And I, it was really important for myself and I think. And he's in chapter six, I, I really provide a lot of detail into. Um, the moratorium study, the thinking that, you know, we did as, as consultants to the board of trustees. Um, and that's why you see there's, uh, a discussion of the different characters of the corridors. Um, and so, uh, we thought that was important to emphasize because. Um, you know, I think the CT zoning is, you know, at least. As a place, it's a character based zoning because it's, it's. Uh, it covers the, you know, the, the downtown, the main downtown America Avenue, but. When, when places have different characteristics. The typical, and, and they have, yet they have the same zoning. See, you know, see, in this case, I mean, C one zoning along each of the four. Uh, I guess I call the four character districts on Post Road. And then, uh, I, I think there's, that's. That's just kind of a, kind of a more forward looking thing like, like. Why is Post Road East treated this with the same zoning as Post Road West? Uh, should it, should it be treated with the same zoning? Should there be some, some, some variation because they are. They're quite, they've evolved into quite different places as they are now. Uh, and so that's one aspect of it. The second aspect is. Um, the potential for affordability was reduced. Uh, during the zoning changes that took place, uh, in the, in the moratorium study. And, um, now I don't know if, I, I don't think the board is, has an appetite to, to, to really revisit that. The, the zoning strategies, I mean, there's, there's a lot of detail that I provide in there about. You know, the decisions that they did make, I think one of the lines here, this is on page hundred and five. Um, that's a lot of pages. Um, the adopt, the text amendments, which is the P L L C two thousand nineteen. Reduces the overall potential for. Uh, apartment and townhouse development. In the village by forty-four percent from the full potential of the Hintonville housing provision. Um, they did maintain, so I, so I really go into detail about. What the moratorium study changes exactly did and what they didn't. Um, where did they maintain affordable provisions? Where did they remove them? And, um. Now, um, is, so. I don't, I don't necessarily, like, like I said, you know. Uh, affordability covers a lot more ground. Well, certainly. The development of portable housing is, is one huge aspect of providing affordable housing, but. There's a, a range of other strategies that, um, uh, that I think, uh, should be part of a framework. I think. Uh, I think I, I guess I would like to get some. A reaction to, um, I mean, it's really chapter six. Chapter six, it, 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 you know, it's, it's really, um. It's very detailed, um, but, uh, I think. I, I would be curious to know, uh, I guess your reaction to whether now or later, you know, come to some of your thoughts on chapter six. In terms of, you know, were you aware of? Of all these, you know, all the things, the inner workings of the moratorium study and the resulting zoning changes. Um, what is your thoughts on the way we kind of characterize these, uh, these? We call them character districts, village downtown, mixed residential corridor. And, and that's kind of another area because, you know, we, when we. When we, um, when we, you know, I remember having a conversation with the board about Halsted Avenue. And, you know, that, that has an interesting character and it's a C one district, very similar to the other ones. Um, I, I guess I just want to get some, some, uh. So, some, some thoughts on, on that approach to starting to think about. About, uh, you know, the way we. Separate that into different character districts. Um, so the, so the, so that's a couple of things. It's just, you know, the, the, the character districts. The, the nitty gritty of the moratorium study. Um, and then we, we, in chapter six, we also. Kind of profiled each of the, um, each of the different, uh. Uh, character districts, I guess, uh, do, do all of you have the, this in front of your screen or is this something I should project, you think, or? Or you think we're okay just now, just discussing it for just for now?
Just discussing, you know, the moratorium study, you know, uh, uh, I think it was going on the planning board, uh. You know, the planning board three years ago, and I don't really remember any involvement or anything about this.
Yeah.
It's kind of old news, uh.
Okay.
It, it makes it sound like it, it changed a lot of things. Um, going forward, uh, that we're living with, I mean. So I'm, you know, I, I mean, I, I kind of looked at, at that section and I was like, well, why is this in here?
Okay.
I'm, it's twenty twenty-two, it's almost twenty twenty-three now.
Right.
This, this is like something that happened so long ago. You know, it's nice to have it like as background, like, you know, if, if it did indeed reduce the potential for affordability. That I think was the absolute opposite of what they were hoping to achieve.
Well, Kathy, if you remember, I, I think we actually had something to say about that. They, they wanted to increase. Affordable housing, uh, on the banks of the rivers. So we, we were looking to put four people in harms way. Which is environmentally unsound and absolutely unfair. To people who have the most to lose if there's a flooding event. So it, in my opinion, it was an asinine suggestion.
I, I do remember.
And, and then it, you know, I don't know what finally happened, but. But it makes no sense. It was actually exacerbating two of our bigger problems.
You can't, you, you know, I, 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 I was reading something about this just recently about affordable housing and what some of the cities are doing and. You know, it's, it's very, very controversial and it would be extremely controversial in a, in a community like Maronic, especially one where one of the. One of the objectives that you said going in was neighborhood character. But it's mostly single family homes.
Right.
Affordable housing by having single family homes everywhere.
That's why I was wondering where, what, how this whole thing about upzoning and ADUs got into the comprehensive plan because. Because number one, that is extremely controversial, as you probably know, the New York State Governor. Um, you know, looked, looked, looked to make a law on that, proposed a law in February. There was a huge outcry all over the state. I mean, just because it's being done in other states doesn't mean it should be done here. I think it's. Very, very controversial and it really goes directly against, you know, you keep repeating neighborhood character. Well, ADUs and upzoning is directly contradictory to that, um, you know, in terms of parking noise, congestion, loss of green space. That's what upzoning and ADUs means to this village and uh my feeling is. That it has no place in the comprehensive plan because it's something that will have to be discussed and. You know, hashed out in the future. I I'm just not sure how it got in there in the first place, but. Um, you know, I just don't feel, I just don't feel it belongs there for those.
That's a good question because Neil, maybe you could just talk a little bit about the process because. There were some community meetings and community input. It wasn't just something where the Board of Trustees told you what to do.
Right, right.
Some parameters, but most, most comprehensive plans from communities are are written by the communities. I mean, they're not written, you know, described. But they're developed with a lot of community input. Now, I, I was at two of the meetings. Back in twenty eighteen, I think, which I don't really recall very well. Recall anything that happened last week or even, but uh. Um, how how much of what we're looking at now was was input from the community or how or? Uh, you know, I I don't, or what, where did it like?
So you'll get.
Is it just from previous comprehensive plans? You know.
Oh, no, it's not.
Plan because it never, it never gets implemented.
No, no, it wasn't from previous comprehensive plans, but I mean, I I have the same issue. It's uh two thousand eighteen, we did workshops, I, you know. We, I would have to go back to the, the, the roster of all the meetings we had for this, but. Um, I think we generally, when we, from the public, we, from residents, we often get the general. Uh, topic affordable, we need more affordable housing, we need more, we want, we want more bike lanes or we want safer crossings, street crossings. Uh, and then as a consultant, we tried to parse out, okay, so what are the means towards doing that? I would say. Uh, I I mean, going to the issue of affordable ADUs, I don't see that as a, I don't see that as an affordable housing strategy that's workable. In a lot of places, it is as it is now, um, maybe it works in in other parts of the West Coast, but. I I would say ADUs is, at the time, that was a hot, that was a hot issue. And there was a lot of interest uh among people ADUs, but um it just sounds very simple to say, okay, we can just build accessory dwelling units. Uh, and make it happen. Uh, but you know, that's, that's very, very difficult. Uh, uh, as a strategy, that's something as a long term thing, yes, it can, it can help. Provide, uh, you know, family, younger people, sons and daughters who want to move out and that sort of thing. So, you know, you know that, so. Um, so that's, the the gist of the feedback is often from that we receive from the, from the public is more general in nature. Uh, the general kind of ambition, aspiration, and then our job is to kind of bring into it more specificity. Uh, and so, uh, what are the different ways that make sense for Maranick? To to act to make their crossings, you know, their streets safer for people, what are the ways? And and that's so, that's generally how most. Uh, public engagement, you know, when we get, when we do a lot of meetings with with residents, we get. Now, there are people who often are, you know, are uh from the, from the boards, we get much more detailed. Uh, feedback, obviously, there's, so that's, that's a big part of what we, oh, I did and what I'm doing now is revisiting my meetings with. Re reconnecting with all of the committees that I, I worked very closely with the Committee of Environment last time. Uh, the Tree Committee, uh, and so I've reengaged the, the, you know, the Tree Committee, the C F T, the Flood Mitigation Committee, because they're really. Um, the ones that are taking things to a, a, a second and third level into, okay, going from. Okay, we want to be more sustainable to, okay, what are we going to be doing to be more sustainable? And you can see how the committee's environment has. You know, has, has run through many different things from food waste, that sort of thing. So that's generally how. Um, you know, that's generally the approach. I think the committee is, uh, you know, that here, they're, they're very strong and so that's. That's what I'm doing now, I'm revisiting all of the committees, talking with all of them, uh. And the planning board, yeah, the planning board was, they had a review role. I I never met. In that with them in person during, as part of the comprehensive, I'm promising some plan process for whatever, for whatever reason. They, they certainly had a, a review chance to, uh, uh, they reviewed all the drafts and I, the comments and such, but I think. I think, uh, you know, uh, to have a more uh upfront role, planning board is good.
We didn't, we, you know, if I, if I remember correctly, and I did find a couple of emails, Greg would send us things.
Right.
But there was no organized effort for the members of the planning board to participate. It was sort of like, oh, there's a meeting. And so the, that, the, the then chair would go and I went to a couple, but no one else went and there was no. Review, uh, we, I had chapters printed out that Greg gave us with the notes, said, please read this, but there was no, please read this by this date. Um, and, you know, it was, oh, here, read this, you know.
Right.
We're gonna, we're gonna do it a little differently, um, but I, but I, you know, I'm still, I'm still struggling sort of with. How rewrite is this going to be? Like, are we, you know, uh? I mean, I'm not going to give you comments that, well, the census data, you know, there's one census data now or.
Right.
Oh, uh, there's, you know, updated data on this and updated data on that, I.
Well, we will be, we are actually updating all the data in section, on section three especially, but go ahead, continue.
Well, no, I'm, I I just have my notes on, you know, I I print, I just printed out the table of contents, so I have some notes on the table of content. You know, like, you know, the Ha- the Hampshire project was pending then, you know, the Hampshire. Came and and we made a decision and now we're in lawsuits, you know.
Like, yeah, right, right, right.
Corps of Engineer, that information will have to be updated. So if you're going to update everything then, so we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at concepts. And and the sort of like, uh, the future considerations and the list of things to do, um, you know. Said the character districts, which um is a term that, um, I think. Is very descriptive, but I never heard it before. Budgets in here, you know what the capital budget in the Village of Maranick is. It's not a real budget, it's just a list of all the projects that people have asked for.
Right, right. It was inserted in kind of after the fact.
Yeah, they're, they're not funded, it's just whatever gets in first, that's what they do. Um, you know, who, you know, whoever can move, so I wouldn't call it the capital budget, but. It's just a list of capital projects that are possible, but again, dated, you know, they're, they're outdated, a lot of it.
So my challenge, one of my, one of my challenges, I, so some part, some folks in the Board of Trustees, so, you know, we were, we, we were, I mean, we were very close to being done. In twenty twenty, we have a full draft final, you know, that had been reviewed. What, that was the, that was the first draft was reviewed, the second, so it's the outcome of two reviews. And so we were indeed close, but everything changed. And so I'm, so the, the char- challenge here is that there may be. I know the Board of Trustees is eager to to complete this, but at the same time. This is a bit, as you see, there's so much in there that is, that is different, that has changed. I think to be more specific for your role, one thing I'd like to learn about. Uh, because, uh, you know, obviously, you you are on on the. You know, you're the ones who are receiving applications, you're the one who see what's coming in. On the, that's, yeah, on the front lines and that's, I I, you know, so. I I I would like to definitely, I want the, obviously, the complex plan to be a place where. Uh, if there's certain challenges that the board is having or things the board is seeing consist, consistently, constantly, that. Whether it's positive or negative, that needs to be um treated in in some way or shape or form through zoning or other measures. Uh, that's something I I, you know, I I would like to know about. I would like to know what you as on the frontline is is. Are coming across and what challenges you have that, that, that a comprehensive plan policy could, uh, could help. Uh, provide direction for or 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 some sort of changes, recommendations or changes for, that's one thing. Um, I think, um, the concept of character district, uh, I, it's. I think, um. I I'd say we're not. I I I, what you said about the more terms today, that's, that's good to know. In terms of that, it happened, it's, it's, that's what happened and, you know, I think. Part of what I probably will do in this update is take, there's a lot of explanatory material in the front of each chap, some of these chapters. And I probably want to just uh make some of these chapters more succinct. Um, in sustainability, there's a whole set, there's a whole couple of pages and pages with. Couple of front pages, which I think could go in an appendix, and so things get straight to the point. Um, so, uh, the, the, I think your comment about the moratorium study is, is interesting. Um, because, right, it had happened, um, you know, and I think it's a great record of what happened, but. It, that's what it is now and and there, there's not a neat, there's no need to devote so many pages towards. Describing those changes. At the time, maybe there wasn't twenty twenty, but you know, now it's twenty. Four years, yeah, four years later.
Yeah, the whole, the whole context is, is different. You know, in the old days, when we talked about affordable housing. Which really meant was subsidized or low income housing. And and now the term affordable housing. Uh, extends well into the middle, middle class.
Oh, without a doubt.
That's a real, that's a real issue, so economics has, has played a big part in changing context.
Right.
Big article in the, in the local paper recently, just I think over the last weekend about. The lack of affordable housing in Westchester and how bad it is and. And and we all know it's bad. I mean, that's why you're living in basement apartments that got flooded.
Right.
And and that's why you have the people who, as as Cindy mentioned, who have the least, losing the most whenever there's a flood. Because that's where the quote affordable housing is.
Right.
Well, loo- look at the application we just considered. They couldn't afford to do affordable housing.
They're building, they want, they have an application to build in the flood zone. It's very expensive to mitigate all of the flood, uh, you know, the things. And they can't afford to put an affordable unit in there.
Yeah.
Cost of of uh construction in this area.
Right.
Things they have to do.
Right, and and that's, yeah, that's, that's the big concern, resolve the macro things, cost of construction, cost of materials. I mean, it's impossible, it's, it's really impossible. And so that's why I think the, the, the retaining strategies becomes very critical. How, how, how do you keep what you have is is one important thing, one important part of it.
Right, but how do you make it safer for people? So that if, as the flood, as climate change happens and the flooding gets worse. You know, people are still not even in their homes where they were.
Yeah, and the worst flooding was in like the basement apartments. So if we're gonna look at, you know, people like putting more people living in their basements. That, that was the most dangerous place during the flood.
I mean, Queens, a lot of people died in those.
Died, yeah.
But not, not in Maranick, everybody got out, but.
Thank goodness.
We lost everything, you know, and just right back, I mean, you know, I I spoke to someone I know and he's just. He just recently moved right back into the same place. So the time it floods, he's gonna lose everything again.
I mean, also, just the, you know, the comments on kind of the patterns that everyone's going to the city. I mean, those obviously. As you know, are outdated with.
Yeah, people are working from home.
It just, it's not that way anymore in the last few years, I'm sure.
And the population shifts even just since the pandemic, when my neighborhood is just a bunch of young families and little kids.
Yeah.
Now, the pri- the housing prices were, you know, are so high that people tried to cash out or cashed out. Starting to come down a little bit again, but, uh, you know, it's, uh. It it's every, yeah, every, everything's sort of changed.
Yeah.
Me, it sounds like a difficult job, what you have to do.
Oh, yeah, it's, 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 this is definitely, uh, it's, it's almost easier to, you know, to start a new company.
It would be easier, it would certainly be easier to start over, I absolutely agree with you.
Some ways.
I think Dennis has his hand up.
Oh, Dennis, I, you want to say something? Feel free to just jump right in.
Yeah, you know, I, but you know, you, 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 you guys are great and I, I didn't want to jump in too early, so. So with, with any new construction in a flood zone, right, we have to elevate the living area. So that's always something to keep in mind. You know, the, um, you know, I I feel bad for. Uh, the security guard or the concierge that's going to be in one of these buildings because he's going to get hit with the floodwater first and probably ring that bell and let everybody know. But all the residents that are going to reside in the structure would have to be raised above the uh base flood elevation. So, you know, even if they, if something is constructed, it's always the worst case scenario for the majority of newer projects they're looking at. So, you know, affordable housing is not, not for the um, the faint of heart and sometimes it's. It is, um, it will obstruct people's views and cram as many places and apartments in one spot as possible. But, you know, there are multiple places in the village that there, there, I feel, so I'm not against building, just being real open here. Uh, there are places that things can be built and there are some properties that have, that have reached a state of. Needed repair, but not yet at the point where the building department can close a property. But I think there's a lot of property owners that could be approached in moving in direction of expanding their property and becoming affordable housing. Um, and, you know, perhaps, you know, if you want, I can facilitate this to a degree and and. Point you guys in the right direction if you want, um, but utilize me so I can, I can age you or assist you to get to. Where, where you feel comfortable or 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 what properties or areas that you're thinking about or or. Or the lack of not knowing where these properties are, I can, I can help you out. Right? That's where I think, when I look back at the work we did for the moratorium study, we essentially did a. A, a build out analysis, but it wasn't just, it wasn't a build out analysis based on theoretical, like, okay, this is what the zoning says, so this is what it's going to be. It was based on a, a study, understanding of the, the value of the, the current value of the property. Uh, and so, so it's based on really identifying those properties that have susceptibility, you know, financial. Incentive to redevelop and based in the zoning, what could be built there. And there are a number of properties on the, on the map that, I think it's on page, um. Let's see, it's probably, it's in section six, it's on page, uh, page one oh two of the comp plan. It, it shows, you know, what are existing properties that could be redeveloped as apartments. And, you know, that was analysis done long ago, so to me, that provides some, some sort of general. Uh, insight into what are some places, but of course, I think, you know, Dennis is saying, I think, at least I would be, I would be interested. In learning and, you know, getting more of the thinking on, uh, what you believe are areas that there are possibilities.
Not feasible until you change the zoning.
Um, uh, well.
Recommendation then in the comp, in the complaint to, to make the zoning changes.
Yeah, I mean, it's a real conflict between single family home zoning and multifamily home zoning. Uh, but I I remember when, when John Verney was chair, I forget what, what the project was, but he and I were chatting. And I said, on the post road, why can't we have a three story building? With a store on the ground floor and two affordable apartments on top. And the zoning didn't permit it, but it just seemed so obvious.
It changed the zoning on the post road.
Yeah.
Right.
There, there's not a lot of storefronts needed these days.
Right, that's right.
That's true too.
So, but then you get a food desert and and you're begging, you know, a grocery store to, to come in. To service the community, I I mean, you start unintended consequences.
That's right. That's why you have to do a complaint.
But look, look how long it took them to get North Shore Farms to come in.
Yeah.
That was a tough one.
And they got flooded.
Lord, I completely agree with you. That's what a lot, comes down to a lot of communities, is that the, the community itself has started soliciting. Markets, groceries to, to come back in and and that's hard. Um, it, it's very difficult.
A lot of communities have, uh, economic development people.
Yeah, and and without changing the zoning, right? Um, and 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 putting a strain on the zoning, the zoning board and and use the planning board. If individual properties come up, you know, there's, they can apply for variance for the individual properties. Instead of changing the zoning map entirely. And, you know, I, I'm good with single family homes. I like single family homes. I, I very seldom. You know, with, within reason to add a mother, daughter, you know, that's always skeptical because that changes the, the, the whole dynamic. Uh, as soon as the inspector walks out the door, um, anything. Uh, as soon as the inspector walks out the door, um, anything can happen. So, you know, a single two-family, that's fine. I mean, our, you know, our, our seven. That's a possibility. Um, and, and going back to the original thing of the locations, a lot of the properties that flood that are still in disrepair. That are, are in the, um, the art, the, the two-family and multi-resident, um, zonings that exist currently are, is still opportune. To, to develop that to a degree, to squeeze out a couple more apartments. So, you know, maybe starting small may be the direction to go in and that's it. I'm, I'm good.
All right, it's getting really late, guys. Um, board members, do you feel like you have enough information to, uh. Review this and, and have some cogent and coherent comments for Neil? By the end of, uh, by the next meeting, which is today.
So coherent is in the eyes of the beholder, but.
Well, I mean, this gives me some thought also, maybe, you know, maybe just having this meeting, let me, let me see if I can also come back with. Some specific bullets that may, that will maybe a little bit more, uh, guided, that will be more, I think, I think some more specificity would probably be helpful.
You, you can communicate with Brittany by email and.
Sure.
Emanate to the planning board or you can, so all at planningboard@vom dot, uh, wait.
Dot org.
No.
O M N Y dot org.
It's V O M N Y dot net, is net for the email address?
Dot org. Dot org.
I think the one for the group is org, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the one for the group is org, for individual people, it's dot net, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think, cause that's, that was my initial thing was, let me give each, each committee a series of questions. Uh, but I think, I think with this group, let me, let me, uh, let me.
Okay, great.
Digest what we've heard talked about.
I feel like you wasted your time tonight, and this, I think was very helpful.
No, no, I mean.
You could go on for hours.
For that, I'm thankful that we didn't go for hours, but.
I'm sorry you were so late, yeah.
No, I mean, this brings back memories of my planning board days back, back as a consultant.
I hope they were pleasant memories.
They were good, they were, though. I learned a lot being a planning board consultant back in the day, so. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll also put some thinking in so that.
Okay.
So that I can try to provide you some more pointed guidance and maybe more specific questions too as well that you might answer while you're reviewing. I think, well, specifically chapters five and six.
It's helpful for us to know that you're really looking at two chapters, you know, we don't necessarily have to read.
Right, feel free to read anything.
That doesn't mean you all can't if you don't want, if you want. I mean, we can, we can focus on those two, but if you have comments on the others, feel free. And, um, it would be good if we, twenty seventh, the meeting on the twenty seventh, to have written comments then, so Ashley can take, pile them. That would be good. So we can have a discussion, but, um, you know, but. We, we won't have a meeting again till September, so she'll have to take what we discuss and what we've written and put it together in a coherent way.
Do we, uh?
Seems to be the word of the night, yes.
Do we, do we know that we'll be doing that meeting on Zoom yet, that next one?
Um, the governor's order expires tomorrow.
So we don't, we don't know.
We could do hybrid, but, um, last time the order expired, she extended it on the very day it expired. So stay tuned.
Yep.
Change her mind or do something tomorrow. Not, um, but it has to be, uh, in person with the majority of the board, uh, members in person. So we'll see. And then if anybody's hybrid or anybody's remote, they have to, uh, indicate their location. On the notice, so, and open their location for, uh, the public.
No.
So if you want to stay home, but I personally, uh, will not be in New York that, that evening. Uh, I will probably be sitting in the same chair. But I am three hundred and twenty-five miles away, so I'm not sure somebody's going to actually come and, and sit next to me here.
We'll come ship with you.
Maybe, yeah, maybe I will. It looks pretty nice.
I, I tried, you know, you, you, you know, I had a nice lake back there and there is a super moon tonight. Oh, wait.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Right, I was trying to get the camera so you could see the super moon ride. Oh, yeah, that's why I didn't know if you got to see.
It's been a nice view, a nice view back there.
Tonight's the night of the full moon and it was.
Lovely.
But it was a lovely, lovely moonrise yesterday. I did get a picture. Hey, I was busy. But, uh, yeah, so I, I won't be there, but we have one new application. I think Brittany, we might get now Van Rans back and, um, and. For the next time and anything else that might pop up that we get on the agenda, but right now we have just one new application. And, um, it doesn't sound like Oriente is going to be back in time, so we'll have time to spend on this, hopefully. All right, everybody, thank you. It's very late. Uh, I mean, we need to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
I need a second.
Second.
One favor. Good night. Thank you, Alicia.
Good night, good night, everybody.
For staying here late.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.